Looking specifically at drug treatment, how would you address the issue of the gatekeeper versus the case manager to make sure that you provided this person the reinforcement they needed?
Well, that is a mouthful of a question, I think. Let me say in terms of how you attract the best providers, I think it is a specialized area and to the extent you create an employment niche for the provider where they can move up the system in accordance with his or her expertise and demonstrated competence, I think that would go a long way towards improving the system rather than creating a number of the de jure barriers that a number of us have been talking about. I think also in terms of type of treatment, I made, I alluded to it in my comments, that we are finding that community-based or even family-based treatment is oftentimes much more effective than ongoing residential treatment. The reason for that is it's one thing to get a patient off a particular substance when they're in a restricted facility such as a hospital. When they go back home and they have all the environmental cues and triggers to their drinking, it's quite another story then to keep them off the substance that they were abusing. You do need, in addition, the longer-term treatment. Our drug experts at the University of Pennsylvania, they're doing pioneering work in alcoholism treatment. What they're concluding is you need to follow these people over an extended period of time, two or three years, in which you have an intensive initial phase treatment, but then you can follow them up once or twice a week over a two- or three-year period. It's a major investment to eliminate an addictive personality structure. So those are a couple of suggestions that we have. I think there were other things that you asked about that I'll turn to others for.
Well, I'll, I think that the key is a continuum of care so that we're able to deal with the problem at its least, with the least cost possible at that particular point in time. That there aren't arbitrary standards of 30 days in an outpatient, in an inpatient facility and on day 31, there's a miraculous cure. There has to be, there has to be a considered decision in terms of, one, if inpatient care is necessary, if it is necessary, for how long, and, and the supports built in the community including treatment with the entire family if we're going to be able to help the problem.
Two questions then. Who's the gatekeeper or in other words, who is the case manager?
Well, social workers, you know, have a, a long history of being able to do that type of case, case coordination because we have the, the best understanding of, in my opinion, of the, of both the intra-psychic and the environmental concerns that are out there in the community. We're the ones that are out there in the community and, and using all kinds of social services in our, in our plan to work with, with any particular client. So I think that social workers at least for one would be the, the right, the right group for that role.
But does this become health care and do you pay for it as the, as a normal health care program?
I, I think our bill that Senator Inouye has introduced treats mental health expenditures at the same, in the same way as medical expenditures. We think that if they're cost-effective because very often people are going for unnecessary visits to medical doctors when really there's an emotional basis for it and we think that it's the cost-effective way to go.
Kimper Gore.
We've heard from many people, the Health Care Task Force has heard that mental health coverage has been lacking and mental health treatment has been lacking in this country. And so I think that given the premise that there are anywhere from, say, around 10 to 14 million American children who are in need of some sort of mental health help according to the Institute of Medicine and the community-based services do not exist for those children. Separately, we have a growing crisis of homeless people in this country, two to three million, about half of them are mentally ill. There simply are not the community-based programs that you speak so eloquently about that we need. You've also talked about shifting a focus from hospitalization to a continuum of care. All of that makes sense, but my question is for both those who need mental health help that are in families, that are children, and those who are homeless and on the streets but who have a mental illness, how would you create the community-based services that do not exist?
Well, one program that does exist that I think very much is in keeping with what you're talking about is the WIDICO program out of Boston. And what they have done is to move right into the schools, lock, stock, and barrel. They treat the kids in the schools, they meet with the parents after school or in the evening in the schools, and so they use the school as the community-based resource. They can then communicate with the child's teachers, with the child, with the parents, and all of the key people who are working with the schools. The cost-effectiveness of the program, which they have good data on now, is very, very impressive. So there are models that are waiting, I think, for you people to adopt and to endorse. And I think that they would prove to be very effective particularly in meeting the needs of, of children.
Our, our plan would include community-based programs, school-linked programs where, where teachers would be the first ones that would be able to pick up some sign of mental illness. The Head Start program, which I know the administration is, is forwarding, would be another source for picking up early signs of problems with, with children. It's, it's so, prevention is so much, is so important to this whole effort and early identification. I mean, we, we see the same issue with mental health as we now see in the medical system where a person, because they haven't been able to afford health care, show up in the emergency room and end up, go right to the intensive care unit where if they had been able to see a doctor a month earlier, maybe just a prescription of penicillin would have taken care of the problem. It's true also with kids, early identification of kids and, and that's why we feel that this has to be seen on a par with other medical services because you pay now or you pay later.
But how do we design a system to bring in the people who are not in school?
Well, the classic, do you mean the children who are not in school?
I mean, both children and those with a mental illness that are on our nation's streets and even in the rural areas.
Well, I think that's where the early detection, prevention at the age of five or six, many of the children who are dropping out of school now, we now are able to recognize as suffering from learning disabilities or attention deficit disorder. We now have the treatments where if we catch a child with that kind of problem at the age of five, by the time the child is about 12 or 13, they will be plugged into the school system, they will have a slightly idiosyncratic set of interests and abilities, but they'll have very good self-esteem and they'll make a very good adjustment to their adult life. If you don't catch them at five, by the time they're 12 or 13, they are very turned off to education. Their self-esteem is rock bottom, they will make a marginal adjustment at best to adolescents and a very poor one to adulthood. So I think that we've got, we have the providers, we have the systems there, and we now at long last have the technological understanding of it, the scientific understanding, to intervene. But it's not something that you can do in a 20-session treatment for the child.
One of the situations, one of the situations that I tried to speak to briefly in my remarks earlier is that our health care system or non-system in this country is upside down. We spend 90% of the funds on high-tech care and 10% on prevention and early care. We have got to re-infuse money into the public health system. The public health system takes responsibility and accountability for all citizens in a geographic area and it finds those very people you were talking about, children before the age of five or six that come to school, the homeless on the street, elderly people in their homes who are not getting sufficient food are visited in many other parts of the world by activist public health nurses who know their community. We really have got to get back to that kind of a model that we used to have. The money that used to go into the public health system has been pulled out to go into getting the state drawdown for Medicaid, which went into acute care services. We really have got to have, as the earlier panel talked about, some kind of a public health set aside and re-infuse a sense of community back into our state governments and into the local community to take care of all citizens.
One of the, one of the things that's been weaving through the comments here is the importance of having planning at the community level and having control and responsibility at the community level. In my state, in Massachusetts, the Department of Public Health has started an experiment of community health networks, which requires agencies in cities, public and private, to talk with each other and to collaborate so that they don't duplicate services, so that they do realistic planning. In our city, we set about looking at morbidity and mortality, health status indicators, and set five priorities. Substance abuse and mental illness were one of those top five in our community. And now providers are talking with each other that never had working relationships together. And I think you have to start there too and somehow build that in.
I just might say one thing though because I think that, that this is one of the big problems that we have with a managed competition system that's being proposed. In my state, for example, our, our community centers are basically paid not to keep people in the mental hospital. Even though they may need care, they're out in two weeks and back on the streets. That creates the homeless problem, that creates the possibility of going into the criminal justice system. We have devised a system of non-treatment and we reward you if you don't treat. And I would hope that in the managed competition system, all these good people that are well-trained are going to be allowed to treat the patient as the patient needs care.
I would just like to echo what Ms. Eldrickson said. I think when you go to the underserved areas, there's a lot of like chiropractors and people sitting on this panel here who serve and are the primary portal of entry for a lot of these people. And I think by creating the dialogue and allowing us the opportunity to deal with these people, both from children up to the geriatric level, I think the interaction of all the professionals will guarantee, will give you a positive response for these individuals. And I think that's what we have to look at here too because in the community setting, that's fine, but we have to also go to these underserved areas and use the resources that we have, whether it be chiropractors, whether it be physicians, assistants, whatever have you, to work as a health team for these individuals.
Senator Reno.
Well, let me say, let me express our thanks to you for participating in this discussion. Just listening to your comments, I think it is obvious that the health care reform proposal, which the First Lady will be recommending and the task force will be recommending soon, has to emphasize preventive care in the benefits package. That has been obvious but is even more so from your comments. And in order for the plan to be comprehensive, we know that good mental health coverage has to be a part of the package. Where appropriate, we also want to empower non-physician providers to provide more of the care needed. And I think you on this panel have given a lot of examples and reasons why that is a necessary feature of a, of a good and comprehensive national health care reform package. Let me, let me say before we conclude this panel that there will be a very, very short lunch break of not much more than 15 minutes. We're going to dash back here and get a real short lunch and then at 12:35, we're going to come back with the next panel, which will be a physicians panel, and we will resume at that time. I want to conclude this panel by again expressing our thanks to each one of you for participating and we look forward to continuing to work with you. Thank you very much. We'll stand in recess until 12:35.
Thank you, sir.
We're going to hear from some health care physician, health care providers now, and we're going to ask this panel to respond to the question, what can we do to ensure the immediate control of costs while ensuring quality care and physician choice? We have a number of witnesses, Dr. Raymond Scaletta, Chairman of the Board of Trustees of the AMA, Dr. Jane Orient, Executive Director of the American Association of Physicians and Surgeons, Dr. Richard Butcher, President of the National Medical Association, John M. Tudor, President of the American Academy of Family Physicians, Howard Pearson, President of the American Academy of Pediatrics, Melvin Sabshin, Medical Director of the American Psychiatric Association. Very pleased and honored that all of you have been willing to come and participate here today. Dr. Scaletta, I enjoyed being with you the other day at your association's meeting and thank you very much for kicking off this first panel of the afternoon session.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. The American Medical Association wants to commend you and Mrs. Gore and the President and Mrs. Clinton on what you've done to initiate this dialogue and moving forward on health system reform. I'm Reese Gallatar, Chairman of the Board of the American Medical Association, and we appreciate this opportunity to state once again our commitment to reform of the nation's health care system. As we have said publicly the last several years and privately in the constructive opportunities, we have had to discuss our views with representatives of the administration and this task force over the last few months. America's physicians know that change is necessary. As the patient's advocate, we know that far too many of our patients have no health insurance coverage. The hassles of providing care under the burden of paperwork and bureaucratic second-guessing frustrates physicians as well as our patients. And the costs of health care are rising too quickly for our patients and the good of the nation. We have not, do not, and will not defend the status quo. You have asked what can be done to ensure immediate control of health care costs while ensuring quality care and physician choice. There are direct workable solutions that can be implemented immediately, an employer mandate to provide a federally established essential benefit package with community rating. Before I speak of them, and our written statement expands on them, I respectfully ask the task force to do one thing, look at experience. Contrary to perceptions, this nation does have experience in both health system reform and controlling costs. One lesson to be gained from experience is that true effective cost control has never been achieved in this or any other economy through arbitrary caps on spending or price controls. They did not work in the 1970s, only delaying natural price increases and impeding supply of necessary goods and services. They also will not work in health care. Price controls or global budgets mean arbitrary decisions that will, without basis, limit our ability to deliver needed medical care to our patients. We have suggested a better way, a partnership between government, physicians, employers, and others. By working together to isolate the costly failures in the health care system, true budget predictability can be brought to this nation's health care costs without limiting patients' access to medical care. Another equally important lesson is that health system reform has already been demonstrated to work in the United States. We are puzzled that more attention is not given to the successes in Hawaii and Rochester, New York. In that state and city, there had been virtually universal access to health care strongly based in primary care at costs well below the rest of the nation and most other countries. Hawaii ensures its population an annual cost of 8.1% of its gross state product. How has this been accomplished? By doing two basic things, require all employers to provide health insurance to their employees and require insurance premiums to be based on community rating. These two simple steps can not only control costs but go a long way towards ensuring universal access. To accomplish a level playing field, choice must be guaranteed, choice between different types of insurance, capitation, benefit plans, and fee for services, and choice of physician. We must have antitrust relief that will allow physicians to negotiate together against large insurers and allow physicians to police their own profession. It is only through these measures that empower patients and allow physicians to make decisions in the best interest of their patients that quality of medical care can be guaranteed while costs are controlled. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Scaletta. I want to repeat something that I said at the beginning of today's session, and that is that all of you are invited to expand upon your presentations, not only during the give and take after the formal opening statements, but in the form of any written materials that you wish to, to give to us. I assure you they'll be studied very, very carefully. Our second presenter on this panel is Dr. Jane Orient, Executive Director of the American Association of Physicians and Surgeons. Welcome, please proceed.
I am Jane Orient, Executive Director of the Association of American Physicians and Surgeons and one of 50 past presidents. I am in the solo practice of private medicine in Tucson, Arizona, and I speak as a physician who is bound by the oath of Hippocrates. By my oath, I must refrain from doing harm to my patients and I must abstain from mischief and corruption. I may not promise my patient a three-minute remedy and then give her a deadly potion. Furthermore, I must follow that method of treatment which, according to my ability and judgment, is for the benefit of my patient. I may not subordinate my judgment to that of a secret counsel. I may not sacrifice my patients to a social agenda. I may not deny my patient a cancer treatment or a heart operation so that his resources may be used to benefit someone with a higher social priority, such as someone who might be entitled to a free checkup. I want the best medical care for my patients and for all Americans. We cannot provide the best until we reduce medical costs. We will not lower costs by abolishing the oath of Hippocrates and destroying the patient-physician relationship. The oath of Hippocrates dates to the fifth century before Christ and the acceleration in American medical costs dates to 1965. Costs skyrocketed because the government got into medicine and costs will not come down until the government gets out of medicine. Out of the private physician's office where regulations are driving physicians out of business, especially in rural areas and the inner cities. Out of hospitals where compliance costs are adding a huge administrative overhead. Out of the pharmaceutical industry where government adds $250 million to the cost of marketing a single new drug. Out of the medical marketplace where government intervention has destroyed the normal mechanisms that keep costs reasonable in a free market. We need to bring patients back in to the financial equation. We must allow patients to benefit from their own prudent spending and saving decisions. All Americans should be permitted to use their pre-tax dollars to establish medical savings accounts. To preserve excellence in American medicine, we must preserve patient freedom of choice and not turn it into the sham of choosing between monolith A and monolith B, both of which offer exactly the same government-dictated package of benefits. Government bureaucracy has never controlled costs. Government officials do not take an oath to do no harm. What a government system can accomplish is to destroy the art and science of medicine in these United States of America.
Thank you, Dr. Orient. Our next presenter on this panel is Dr. Richard Butcher, President of the National Medical Association. Dr. Butcher, welcome.
Thank you. The National Medical Association welcomes this opportunity to address the President's task force on health. As the oldest African-American national professional organization in the United States, the National Medical Association has tracked the history of minority health care for a century. This gives the NMA a unique perspective from which to view and evaluate the spiraling cost of health care and the growing needs for a more efficient delivery of health care in the minority community. The problem is the absence of a health care delivery system. If the administration is going to do anything, it must commit itself to developing a delivery system. It is from this perspective that the NMA makes the following recommendations. African-American physicians should be included in all stages of the implementation of the administration health care policy. A national contracting agency designed to enhance capacity and develop management structure which addresses inner-city health care delivery system deficits should be established. The National Medical Association recommends that National Health Board be established, modeled after the structure of the Federal Reserve Board. Members of the National Board would be appointed by both the President and Congress. Regional boards would be created in addition to the National Board, as in the case of the Federal Reserve System and its regional banks. Members of the national and regional boards would be representative of the entire population, thus requiring the participation of African-American and other minority health practitioners. Board members would be independent. In a wealthy nation such as ours, it is appalling that so many go without having their basic health needs met. The advent of managed care systems, while extending the breadth of more affordable health care to many, would leave a substantial segment of the population without medical care and health insurance. There has been no competition for the uninsured, the homeless, the lower-income, the ethnic minority populations, and the mentally ill. It is unreasonable to expect a middle-class delivery system to embrace these populations. African-American physician practices disproportionately reflect those of low income, uninsured, and poor. The administration should develop a two-pronged strategy which would focus on capacity building in the inner cities. Capacity building is essential before we get to market, competition, or universal coverage. The NMA recognizes the necessity of cost containment in the establishment and operation of a national health policy. The NMA also recognizes however that if cost containment works to limit or reduce services to the patient population, the result will be an incomplete and ineffective health care system in which equal access becomes only an empty phrase with no practical substance. Cost containment must therefore be attained through a positive approach to efficiency. The NMA strongly believes that this can best be accomplished through quality assurance measures that expand the concept of wellness and prevention. The National Medical Association firmly believes that efforts at cost containment can be substantially furthered through the medical liability reform. A professional liability review committee tied to the National Health Board should be established. This committee has responsibility for resolving claims of substandard practices resulting from poor outcomes. The NMA further recommends that the following disciplines in medical fields be included in any consideration of health care reform and that professionals from these disciplines be included on the proposed national medical boards, mental health, dental health, nursing, and pharmacology. The health care needs of the nation's minority communities are myriad, and the responsibilities placed on African-American physicians in the delivery of health services to this population makes us uniquely aware of the need for substantive health policy reform. Thus, the National Medical Association is spearheading a National African-American Leadership Summit on Health Care Reform in Washington on May 2nd, 3rd, 1993. The NMA recommends that the Administrative Task Force on Health avail itself of the information which will be generated by Summit 93. I thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Butcher. Our next presenter will be John M. Tudor, who is President of the American Academy of Family Physicians. Welcome, please proceed.
Good afternoon. My name is John M. Tudor, Jr., MD, and it's my privilege to serve as President of the American Academy of Family Physicians. I appreciate the opportunity to briefly address the challenge of controlling health care costs in the short run while ensuring quality care and physician choice. Traditional efforts to control health care costs have generally involved tighter eligibility standards, reductions in covered benefits, increased out-of-pocket costs, or price controls, that is, fee reductions. All four mechanisms constitute blunt instruments that attempt to indiscriminately reduce the volume of services. None of these mechanisms have had significant or lasting impact on health care costs and in many instances have resulted in unintended and perverse consequences. For example, tighter eligibility standards and reduced benefits and higher out-of-pocket costs often result in unnecessary illness due to the failure to obtain needed care in a timely fashion, and all four mechanisms tend to shift costs onto more generous payers. We believe the fundamental problem to be the failure to properly manage the receipt of personal health care services. Our present health care system results in fragmented, uncoordinated, and overly expensive care of inconsistent quality. The solution for both the short and long run will be to create an environment where efficient systems for managing personal efficient systems for managing personal health care can readily function. The basis of these systems is the interaction between the patient and his or her personal physician, which has proven to be the most effective element in cost reduction because of its contribution to preventive care, to ongoing health maintenance, and a reduction in the inappropriate utilization of services and procedures. We understand that the administration will propose incentives for the formation of large, efficient managed-care systems that are intended to compete on the basis of cost and quality. However, even under the most optimistic scenarios, it will take at least five years for these incentives to yield measurable cost and quality improvements. In the short run, substantial improvements can be obtained by requiring every individual to select a personal physician who would be responsible for providing primary care services, and when necessary, coordinating the receipt of secondary and tertiary services. Such a system should be enforced by imposing higher cost-sharing agreements for seeking and obtaining non-emergency services without referral. It is important to recognize the success of the personal physician requirement hinges on the availability of physicians who possess the broad range of primary care competencies. This includes physicians trained in the generalist specialties of family practice, general internal medicine, and general pediatrics, providing long-term care, medical database, and referral and consent coordination. The shortage of generalists constrains the most important health decision that patients can make, and by default, abandons patients to make ill-informed decisions regarding the management of their own care. No other developed country and no other organized system of care requires patients to make such decisions. The ultimate success of an organized system of care depends on their incorporating the personal-physician concept. Appropriate reimbursement and other changes to create a supportive practice environment will ensure that there is an adequate supply of generalist physicians to fulfill this role. Once again, I appreciate the opportunity to participate in today's hearings. In addition to our own health care plan from ’92, the Academy stands ready to assist the task force in any way possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tudor. Our next presenter is Howard Pearson, President of the American Academy of Pediatrics. Mr. Pearson, welcome.
Thank you, Vice President Gore, and members of the task force. We're particularly pleased that the task force has chosen to consider children's needs as you develop national health care reform. The costs and consequences of health problems of children—malnutrition, anemia, lead poisoning, lack of immunizations, teenage pregnancy, prematurity—are not only health costs, but they also appear on the ledgers of social service, education, and correction systems. The record simply doesn't support the contention that if adults are taken care of, the children will be cared for well in addition. Our children have been short-changed for far too long. With respect to children, specific cost-containment measures should include the following: an emphasis on preventative care with short-term gains, as exemplified by the cost-benefits of immunization ($10 to one), as well as long-term gains in early identification and amelioration of chronic disabilities. There should be targeted, income-adjusted cost sharing. The delivery of health care should be provided in appropriate sites, such as substituting costly emergency room services with primary care in an office setting, and promoting the medical home concept of continuity of care. And finally, coordination of care for children with special health care needs. I submit that these cost-containing measures would reap immediate benefits. According to the Congressional Research Service, uninsured children use nearly one-and-a-half times more hospital days than did insured children. They were the only age group for which this phenomenon occurred. Inpatient care, which is almost one-half of all children's medical expenses, should actually be reduced if all children were insured. I'd like to expand on the medical home concept because it gets to the very heart of the issue of quality. A medical home is simply a regular and ongoing comprehensive source of health care that's available around the clock 365 days a year. It provides preventative care, early treatment of acute diseases, and the coordination of care for those with chronic or handicapping conditions. I believe that for children and adolescents, this medical home is best provided by pediatricians. But I'm aware that our current pediatric manpower may need to be supplemented by community health centers, rural clinics, along with other venues and providers. Specific cost-containment measures with respect to the providers should include the development of a pediatric-based relative-value scale (RBRBS), medical liability reform, as well as administrative reform. The issue of choice may be difficult to address under managed-competition models if pediatricians would be restricted to a single plan. Choice is important to patients and families. Continuity of care is the cornerstone of pediatrics. Therefore, we would urge that physicians be allowed to participate in more than one plan to give patients and physicians some degree of flexibility. Health care reform for children should provide universal access to a one-tier system and provide appropriate benefit packages that emphasize preventative care. By expanding access to health care for our children and improving their health, we will not only do what is right, but we will contain costs, help ensure quality, and strengthen our economy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our final presenter on this panel is Melvin Sabshin, Medical Director of the American Psychiatric Association. Welcome, please proceed.
Mr. Vice President, members of the panel, I am Melvin Sabshin, the Medical Director of the American Psychiatric Association, and I am pleased to have this opportunity. I'd like to make four points. First, that health care reform affords a unique, timely, and cost-effective opportunity to end discrimination against the treatment of those with mental illness and substance abuse in this country. Second, this opportunity comes at a point in time in which scientific developments have reached a very high level in a way that we can now know more precisely about the prevalence of mental illness, and we also have a way of treating patients with high efficacy, and that's important to emphasize, despite the fact that many people do not seek such treatment. Third, we have an administration that understands the historic discrimination and opposes that discrimination resolutely. You, Mr. Vice President, and certainly the President have stated that frequently. And also, the administration understands that effective treatment of mental illness will reduce other health care costs. Mrs. Clinton has made that point, and I quote her, "They," talking about mental illness, "are underlying problems that affect the whole system," meaning the health system. And certainly, Mrs. Gore has been a tireless voice in working on this issue and reflecting her understanding of the efficacy of treatment and the broadness of the problem. Fourth point, with all good intentions and for all the opportunities, there are dangers that exist in how this whole system will be treated, and I will comment about some of those dangers briefly. What I'd like to do at this point is to embellish the four points in whatever time I have available speaking quickly. In terms of the prevalence, it is very clear that we're dealing with disorders that are as high in prevalence as, for example, respiratory disorders or cardiovascular disorders. That is a major national problem. The treatment with a good cost-control studies and empirical data has reached a very high level, as I indicated, with a special problem that so many people are not seeking treatment. Note the indirect costs, as Dorothy Rice has pointed out, and I have submitted that data, that in terms of indirect costs, meaning people who go to jails, people who seek other health treatment, people who show less productivity at work, those indirect costs in the areas of mental illness and substance abuse are higher than the direct costs. So that adequate treatment of people with these disorders should make a difference quickly in that regard. There are some dangers, as I've indicated in the health reform. Relative value scales have special problems from my field, and if there are some questions about that, I'd be delighted to respond. I also want to say how pleased I am with this opportunity, and would be glad to cooperate in any way we can on dealing with health care reform. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Certainly appreciate it. And let me note that at the beginning of this panel, we were joined by Dr. Laura Tyson, who is Chairman of the President's Council of Economic Advisers. Let me just say, before I invite questions from the panel here, that the health care task force, as Mrs. Clinton has made clear, is determined to help doctors by reducing paperwork and administrative costs and by doing something to curb malpractice suits. The task force is determined to encourage general practitioners instead of specialists, specialists where needed, but more encouragement, relatively speaking, to a general practitioners. And, Dr. Butcher, since you and your association have talked about the single-payer plan, as have many others, of course, the task force supports the goals of single-payer legislation: cost containment, simplification, reduced paperwork, high-quality health care, guaranteed benefit package, and they will be central elements, to be sure, of the proposal which comes out in May. However, the task force is committed to maintaining a uniquely American system, one that is rooted in the private sector, builds on our employer-based system, maintains the highest quality of medical care in the world, and preserves the right of Americans to choose their own doctors. In the process, everyone who has been making lots of money off of health care in the last 10 years will need to sacrifice in order to make the system work. Now, obviously, those are challenging goals that will be difficult to meet, but we are determined to meet them. Let me just open it up by asking this question and invite you to respond. What is the most important element of a new health care system which can ensure patient choice of their doctor? Whoever wishes to respond.
I believe the most important is having a personal physician who would provide continuity. And as Dr. Pearson said, if physicians are involved in more than one plan, even though economic benefit may shift from one plan to another, the option to stay with the same physician even though you change plans is an individual choice that families should have. Their personal care, their records, their availability to other specialists, even the health care team that works with them, allied health professions, would all be coordinated under one focus or medical home, as pediatricians call it.
The most important thing is to allow the patient to have control over his own money in an individual medical savings account instead of turning it all over to the third party. We believe that medical costs could be decreased probably by 25% just by instituting individual medical accounts for all Americans.
I come from a field in which the choice of the patient is extremely important, obviously, and that it has to be dealt with sensitively. That the kind of work that is done by a psychiatrist is very sensitive, and I would advocate that the patient be able to choose that person. Simply assigning, without attention to the detail of personal interaction, will be deleterious to patient care.
I can only speak, again, and emphasize the importance of a medical home to pediatric care, extending from birth until adolescence or beyond. This concept, we believe, would provide the best of care. It would address some of the real tragedies in the country at the present time, like the shortage of—or the under-immunization of so many of our children. We feel that that is an absolute critical component. Preventive medicine is an absolute critical component of pediatric care, and the concept of a medical home, I think, would go a long way to meet that problem.
I wanted to say that—I agree with many of the comments, but I would also add that this portability of coverage must continue when employment changes. This has been one of the major problems that we have had. It's not just changing health insurance plans, but it's the fact that when employment changes, people lose their coverage, and that must be addressed via a basic or comprehensive insurance plan.
That results in what they call job lock.
Very much so.
A lot of people feel as if they cannot, under any circumstances, move from one job to another out of fear that they will lose the health care coverage they now have.
Particularly if they have a disease of some sort, they're then concerned, under the current system, that they will be denied coverage because of a pre-existing condition.
Indeed. Mr. Magaziner?
Yes, I'd like to ask you all if you would be more specific about some of the administrative changes that could be made that would simplify the lives of doctors and would help remove some of the barriers to care that you've referred to. What would be the most egregious ones, and the ones either perpetrated by government or by the insurance industry, whatever, that you feel strongest about?
I would say that number one is insurance forms and insurance denials. The tendency has been to have a different form by every insurance company, and the special way that it has to be filled out, if you don't do it right, it gets sent back. We suspect that sometimes that's used to keep money in the bank longer before payment, but we can't ever prove that. But it is a manipulation of facts that requires us to resubmit the same claim, sometimes two and three times. If we know what the requirements are, if we know what the guidelines for approval of a service are, we can provide that information. But there's been a tendency to keep that information secret. The other thing is just the cost of complying with multiple regulations. You can't do one thing because the door's not wide enough. You can't do something else because you can't have a lab in a physician's office without accreditation. There's, you know, a fear of great fines from OSHA, which has a reputation for being very onerous on industry, and we're now a small business that's suspect under OSHA. So a lot of regulations on the government side that could be greatly simplified or abolished.
There is a huge administrative overhead for filing insurance claims for very small expenses. It can cost $50 to process a claim that returns to the beneficiary $2.34. Most medical expenses should be paid out of a savings account, and insurance should be used only for what insurance is supposed to cover, that is, large catastrophic expenses.
I'd just like to add that there is this tremendous administrative burden, such as with utilization review. Frequently, physicians have to respond to a carrier who is not in the same state, justifying treatment, asking minutia of details which take up time when you could be devoting it to patient care. Similarly, government regulatory burdens have become so enormous, and they've already been alluded to particularly clear, which was—may have been intended as an act for the public good, but is going to actually impair and impede patient care if physicians have to close down their office laboratories.
We have been heavily regulated at the federal, at the state, and at the local levels. I believe that a system where there's organized quality assurance and an opportunity for the professionals to be involved with non-professionals and with a variety of other professionals in quality assurance would be cost-effective and would play a role in limiting these administrative costs. As I indicate, we have attempted to develop our own program, and I want to indicate that this is a mechanism not only to improve treatment, but a way to reduce administrative costs.
I think pediatricians have had concerns about Medicaid in many states. It's been stated that the best description of Medicaid would be low pay, slow pay, no pay. I think because of this, there has been a reluctance of many pediatricians to take Medicaid children in their practice. In states where this was not the case, their participation has been very, very good. So that I think that the whole concept of the Medicaid mechanism really, I hope, is part of your judgment and decision-making.
Dr. Pearson, I've always appreciated very much pediatrician's emphasis on preventive care and the concept of a medical home. As we try to move perhaps more to that type thing, could you comment on how we incorporate the public health system and the traditional emphasis they've had on preventive care and how you see those working together?
I think we're going to have to be very, very imaginative and look at a variety of venues where health care can be delivered. Our bias is that the school-based clinic is probably not a viable model, but the school-linked clinic where professionals, physicians, nurse practitioners are intimately involved in management and direction of patients is a viable alternative, and we're studying that. I think that we must keep in mind that the preventative aspects of pediatric care is the crucial one. There has to be a tracking system. We're very much in favor of a national tracking system integrated into a state network that will track immunizations, that will render the problem of the under-immunization, and the reappearance of diseases that should have disappeared a decade ago will be taken care of.
When you talk about school-based and school-linked, that we're hearing more about school-linked now, could you talk a little more about specifically how you all see this?
Well, it'll differ. There are many places that a school-based clinic makes no sense at all. There's adequate medical manpower in the vicinity and that sort of thing, and it would seem to be ridiculous. seem to be ridiculous to set up a parallel structure that competed unnecessarily. On the other hand, in broad parts of the country, in rural America, some of the inner cities, school-based clinics are working. They're working in New Haven, for example, at the present time, but they do have the coverage that is necessary, the components of the medical home that I suggested. Who looks after the kid on Saturday and Sunday, or in the evenings, or during vacation? There has to be some sort of linkage with an ongoing program, and that's why I think the school-linked concept is probably a sound one.
May I respond? Also, I think there's some disadvantages to focused or site-specific treatment. Schools, hospitals, larger organizations where people have to come to the site. I think the best force for continuity with the family is something that's local and is their personal choice. In underserved areas where this facility simply don't exist, it may be a key to establish a community-oriented project that brings the physicians, the nurse practitioners, the social workers, the full team to provide that continuity. But we feel that putting the preventive care into the office practice where you get your screening and you get your immunizations as part of your regular visits.
I'd like to add a comment related to your use of the term "public." And in psychiatry, historically, there's been a great responsibility of the states to deal with psychiatric problems, but it gets complicated currently to talk about public-private mixes. I think with health care reform, as I see it, there'll be a new definition of public-private mixes with cooperation between private and state systems in developing the reform. And I wanted to say, we want to cooperate and have some ideas on how that could work, and we're glad to submit that for the record.
Do you want to summarize some of them now?
Well, I think that New York State has a very good model, and that under Commissioner Searls in New York State, there is a new mix. He's been active, I know, in providing some advice to the Course Committee, and I think his ideas of the state paying for some of private services are very good. I think his ideas of looking for new ways to cut down the inpatient care, important as that is to continue, but to find effective ways to accomplish that is a very good model.
Can I ask a question? One of the things we're most concerned about is that we do as little as possible to disrupt the positive doctor-patient relationship. And in a lot of the worst examples one could point to of managed care, that relationship gets disrupted. And one of the nightmares I have, if we do this wrong, is that, you know, when a doctor wants to take a patient's temperature, they're going to have to make a phone call to get a pre-authorization from some commuter in another state that, you know, taps it out. And that's the opposite of what we want to try to create here. On the other hand, there are a lot of doctors who we've talked to who think that the notion of networks of doctors coming together does often provide a valuable positive force in terms of delivery of care. And I'm wondering if you could help us figure out how to strike that balance correctly so that we get the benefits of networking, but without the, you know, the things that can go wrong with those networks in terms of impinging on the doctor-patient relationship.
Yes. I think that that's a very important thing to look at, and the thing that we talk about is making sure that the regional or the traditional providers are included in that networking, not overtaken by some superseding organization. And I think that that's the key to what's going on. And a lot of times, some of the traditional providers are not included or cannot get into the organization, and then they are pushed to the outside and doing it. And I think that that would be the disruptive measure.
One of the things that a few of you have mentioned is the notion that a doctor should be able to join more than one plan or more than one network, and that, I understand, is one way to do this. Are there other specific ways that you would suggest that can try to guard against this problem?
Well, I think it's important to have physicians involved not only in providing care, but in the governance and policy setting of these accountable health plans, so that the clinical issues, the necessity issues are very obvious. Some of the attempts at restrictive panels, that is, very small panels by insurance companies, implies that they can have better control and they can drive the doctor better if they've got total power over his income. I think that that's inappropriate. It doesn't base it on quality. It bases it just on financial aspects, and neither the hospital corporations nor the insurance corporations have shown very much restraint in the last 10 years in cost control and market expansion.
It's really a quality care issue. If physicians ought to know what the criteria to get into one of these plans, if it's restrictive and we do not know what you need, then you're going to find that your patients are not going to be able to stay with you in a specific plan. And this is one of the reasons why physicians need the ability to negotiate with these plans so that they are not restricted arbitrarily and they can see to it that their continuity of care maintains.
The only way in which managed care really saves money is by giving physicians financial incentives to deny care, by putting the patient and the physician in a conflict of interest situation. Networks, if they are a good thing, will arise spontaneously in a free marketplace.
So I can ask one more question? I don't want to take up all the time here, but... Going along with this question about the formation of networks, how would you propose that we preserve the choice of type of care option, both for the physician and the patient? In other words, some physicians and some patients may prefer to go to a closed-panel HMO-type model, others may prefer IPO or whatever type model, others a fee-for-service model. How would you construct those various alternatives or allow those alternatives to grow up in a way that would allow them to coexist?
Tax equity.
Sorry?
Tax equity. Do not use the tax code to favor managed care networks. Every American should get the same tax benefits from using his money in the method of his choice to buy medical care.
Well, the competition model really has to see to it that we do have competition between a capitated plan, a benefit plan, and a fee-for-service plan. There are many patients who will prefer to stay within a fee-for-service module, or some may wish to go into capitation, but these options have to be preserved.
I would hope that there can be some diversity in experimentation, as the experimentation at the state level. Again, in my field, we have some special problems of an extraordinary large number of people who are in solo private practice, and we have an educational job to teach them about joining networks, and we hope that there can be a diversity of such networks. There are some good models already extant. I would call attention to the Rochester model, in which they worked on an exceptionally good system for dealing with our particular problem.
We have a particular bias perhaps in pediatrics is that many of these panels that have been set up will say that there's a hematology problem, and there we have an adult hematologist who may have no training, no skill, no expertise, and no experience in caring for children. We think that as they are set up, that the recognition that pediatric subspecialists do provide the proper care for children with complex disease ought to be recognized and taken care of.
I think that with the universal coverage and no exclusions, the market should help to balance out what people are willing to pay for, because the benefits will be prescribed and the cost would be measurable differences. I think it's important also that you provide multiple choices, particularly in underserved areas such as inner city or rural districts, so that it's not a matter of redlining and you have one area that just doesn't have anything but one choice.
Secretary Shalala?
I'm sorry, I missed your presentation. I was off speaking to the OB-GYNs who are in town. The previous panel included many other kinds of health care providers, practitioners. Could you comment on the role that you see for health professionals who are not physicians as part of a reform scheme?
Our policy as family physicians is that we support working with all of those people, and it would be even easier, I think, under a new system to have them at the same site of care. It currently does not, is not economically feasible for us to all have a nurse practitioner or a social worker in our office, because many of those services are not reimbursable. They are reimbursable to neighborhood centers or hospital-based clinics where it's a cost-based operation, and their fees are sometimes five, three to five times what we collect for an office visit. But if we're getting comparable pay for comparable services, I would like to see those used. When they were talking prescriptive practices, I didn't realize they were talking prescribing practices. Most state licensure laws do list under protocol the procedures and range of services that they're qualified for on the basis of their training, which is not 11 years like most physicians.
I'd like to add that Secretary Shalala, with psychiatry's relationship with the other disciplines has many good qualities, but there are areas of some conflict, specifically on prescription privileges. While experimental activities have already taken place with some professionals other than physicians on prescription privilege, it should be not taken lightly. I recognize that can be a defensive area, but to think of development of the capacity for prescription privilege in a short time has some dangers for patients. So as usual, there needs to be a balance between the needs for these providers and making sure that patients are protected. Some of the experiments in regard to prescription privilege at uses, the military medical school, I think have already shown that the training of psychologists is now in the second year and looked like it'll go on to the third year, will have an effect, a miniature medical program.
Dr. Pearson?
My question is to just get your ideas about what criteria you consider to be most important in thinking about what should go into a basic benefits package for Americans. I think Dr. Pearson talked about preventive care. On the other hand, Dr. Orion talked about a narrow definition of insurance, which really was insuring against catastrophic risk. And so there obviously is a range of opinion, and we're trying to grapple with, if we were to come up with a basic benefit plan, what's the criteria for including things or not including things?
Patient's choice about what type of insurance coverage they feel best meets their own needs.
What, can I pursue that with you a minute? What if, we do have a problem of underserved, underinsured people who will not be able to provide from their own savings. I mean, your position is very clear, you would like people to do it through their own savings, and there is still going to be the need, even if one went in that direction, to provide services for those who simply cannot provide for their own services through their own savings. So you still have to think about this question of what is the basic benefit that we want to have all citizens have access to regardless of their ability to save it themselves?
The safety net should be a separate issue. If we wish to have a separate program for covering the 1 percent of the population that is not insurable or the percentage of the population that is indigent, that should not serve as a mechanism for disrupting the entire medical marketplace.
Okay, but then what, even for, then let me just get to the general question of whether, how you finance it or not, the sort of issue of what you would include, as I said, I think there's a range of opinion, in the notion of what one would insure, even for that small percentage of the population or for a larger percentage. I mean, I'd like to ask the question generally, on what criteria for including services?
Well, the American Medical Association has studied this very diligently, and we've provided a basic benefit package, and we'll give you the details of it, and we've gone into the financing of it, what it will consist of, and we think that this is what is necessary, office visits, prenatal care, obstetrical care, immunizations, this has all been provided for. It does include a deductible and it does include a cap so that individuals, there's a maximum that they can be charged, and we have had it actuarially studied so that it is economically feasible. So this is something that we can provide to you.
The Academy's system of benefit package is really a layered option choice, where there's increasing copay and deductible as you get further and further away from necessary care. There's too great a temptation even for the working family to defer the payments. Immunization serves as a good example, $180, $400 for maybe $1,000 by the time you include the office visits to get a child up to grade school age for all levels of preventive care that should have been done. It's too easy to put that on the back burner and delay it unless there is a payment for it. Talk about a medical savings account. Well, how do you require that everybody has that savings account and uses it at the right time? So in one sense, you're putting the health care reform or an insurance plan in the place of required IRA.
I wanted to make two additional type of points. One is the importance of the development of practice guidelines and practice parameters in relationship to your question, to the extent that all of medicine can be active in developing such plans. And I know that is going on in many specialties as well as the AMA. That could be helpful in your deliberations. We've attempted to do that for a variety of psychiatric disorders and have been mindful of cost effectiveness in our development of such parameters. A second point related to your question is I think the varying degree of interest in the Oregon plan, as far as I'm concerned, I'm glad that it has been permitted to go on, and that should provide very interesting data of how to make limits. Beyond the data, it's a moving experience to see what they're going through. We've been pleased in working with the Oregon authorities on that.
Tipper Gore?
Thank you. It would seem as though the system has evolved to favor specialists, and I wanted to ask, in your opinion, in terms of reforming the system, what's the most important thing you see that can be done to encourage minority physicians and more primary care physicians?
Okay. I think that one thing that has to be done is that we have to start encouraging the physicians or potential physicians at an early age. Most of the time, you wait until the 12th grade. We've got to start in the elementary school settings and to try to encourage them to go into medicine. We have some programs in the National Medical Association trying to develop this. The other thing that's important is that, as was mentioned in one of the earlier panels, is that we have to go to the historically black colleges, the medical schools, and to have them help with the production or increasing the numbers. The last thing that I would like to say is that I think that we've got to extend some of the programs that are already going on by helping to get more of the physicians in these communities, and I think that they will return back to help the practices.
Second, we need to correct some of the historically-based inequities which affect student choice. We also have expanded our recruitment efforts before medical school to college advisors, to high school career choice programs, and think that that will pay a benefit in a number of years. We have this year, for the first time, seen a significant increase in the number of students entering family practice residency after medical school. The disincentives lie not only in the historically-based reimbursement charges, where the underserved neighborhoods and the rural health areas have traditionally gotten lower pay, but also that generalist pay has been lower than procedural pay through some aberrances in the insurance marketing and claim system. So that those need to be fixed. But in the medical school, the power, the prestige, the elite belongs to research and knowledge, and that certainly is an appropriate role for the university. But it's not the only purpose for which medical schools exist, and changes in the reimbursement for graduate medical education can provide the funds for the city hospitals and the university hospitals to provide care in the rural centers and in the urban neighborhoods rather than those patients having to come to the center all the time.
Medical school debt, medical school debt is a real problem, and young physicians leave medical school with debts greater than $50,000 on average. They finish their residencies with debts greater than $75,000, and therefore, it's more than likely that they're going to be attracted to specialties where there's been traditionally higher reimbursement. But even beyond this, we have to recognize that even for primary care physicians today, we're going to find an enormous liability problem that's going to plague all of us.
80 percent of pediatricians do provide primary care currently, and we see no sea change in career choices of pediatricians in the near future. But I think if we're going to get people into primary care, the critical time is early in medical school or in the second or third year of medical school. And I think a valid use of graduate medical education fund, funding, would be to stimulate the development of programs and experiences in ambulatory, in an ambulatory setting rather than the ivory tower of the teaching hospital. These have been remarkably successful. They provide role models that students can emulate, and I think this is probably the way to attack the problem directly.
In a prior panel, I thought that was a very good answer to part of your questions where the isolation of many people who practice in rural areas, and how important it is to think through about use of new technology to keep the relationships of these practitioners to places where there are higher concentrations. And that is indeed one of our areas of interest. And to the second point, I think all of us need to be more sensitive about the problems of minorities in all of our specialties and in general medicine, and to think through what else might be useful in inducing them to enter with all of the diverse career options open to them. We've organized several fellowships that have attempted to do that. I can't say that they have been strongly successful at this point, but we are investing more in those programs.
If I could follow up on that question by exploring your response, Dr. Skeliter, when you said that one of the elements which, in our current system, which encourages physicians to go on into specialties beyond what you might expect, just looking at the demand for medical care, is the overhang of debt when they finish basic medical school. I'm just throwing this idea out off the top of my head. I'm not trying to send any signal on behalf of anybody. The idea behind the national service program is to meet the need for community service in a variety of areas, while simultaneously giving an alternative method for repaying loans for undergraduate school. The National Medical, National Health Service Corps finances 100% of a medical school education in return for a set period of time, year for year, I believe it is, in serving in an underserved area. In spite of the large expense incurred by individual students at medical school, more than 50% of the expense of medical school is subsidized by the taxpayers today. Would you support an alternative method for medical school graduates to pay off that debt by serving a limited period of time in an underserved area?
Yes, I think we certainly would, and the National Health Service Corps has encouraged this in the past, and many young students, as they try to go to medical school, have tried to go into the military or have other arrangements whereby their debts would be diminished. But certainly, a National Health Service Corps approach whereby debt would be diminished or a payback time would be a wonderful way of accomplishing this.
I would, I'd like to say, though, that I think that, I agree with that. I think that more effort has to be made with increasing the number of the minority physicians. For instance, African-American physicians comprise 3.5% of the total physician population, whereas in the total population, they're some 12 or 13%. When you get people to pay back services in the National Health Corps, this is good, but what we see these people doing, as was stated earlier, is they spend one or two years and then they'll leave. What we really want to do is to get people to come and stay in the communities, and the more of the people you get out of these communities to go back and practice there, the longer that they're going to stay.
But these are not either or.
No.
We need to do both.
It depends on the design of the program. I think it's very important to look at retention. If you're taking someone partway through his training who is not qualified and has to leave to get further training, like in the community service in Mexico, then those people universally leave and they go and do something else. If the situation is a bad situation, doesn't have community support, the proper materials to practice, then just going there doesn't guarantee you'll be retained. We need to provide a better fit for people based on their professional qualifications for the kind of work that they're going to be done, and that means more generalist for those assignments.
It's our belief, too, that if you, instead of giving a scholarship, you get loan repayment so that the person is making a decision at the time, rather than four years in advance, would enhance retention.
Very good. Well, on behalf of the task force, I would like to thank each of you and your organizations for the views presented here today, and again invite you to supplement your statement here with any additional written materials you wish to provide. Again, it's not just boilerplate when I tell you they'll be studied extremely carefully. I assure you that they will be, but thank you very much for participating today. We'll now go on to the sixth panel, and I would invite the insurance panel to come forward at this time. Bill Gradison, President of the Health Insurance Association of America; Eric Gustafson, President of Independent Insurance Agents of America; Mary Nell Lenhard, Senior Vice President of Blue Cross Blue Shield; Jack Moynihan, Executive Vice President for Group Insurance of the Metropolitan Life Corporation on behalf of the Alliance for Managed Competition; and James Doherty, President of the Group Health Association of America. We're going to invite this panel to respond to the following question. Why do insurance companies use pre-existing conditions to determine who to cover? Let me say on a personal note, well, two personal notes. First of all, I'm going to have to go to the White House to deliver a speech on another topic, and I'm going to ask Carol Rasko to take over the duties of chairing this with the assistance of Secretary Shalala and the panel following this one. And the second personal note is, it's a privilege to introduce for you the first presenter on this panel, a former colleague of mine in the House of Representatives, Bill Gradison, who appears here as President of the Health Insurance Association of America. I apologize, but I assure you, I'm going to read these statements very careful.
Please proceed.
Sure.
Shall we proceed?
Mm-hmm. I am Bill Gradison, President of the Health Insurance Association of America. HIAA supports prompt federal action to accomplish the important goals we share with you: achieving universal coverage, controlling health care costs, maintaining quality health care, and assuring the American people that they will have health care when they need it. We are today a highly regulated industry. In order to offer competitive rates and at the same time remain solvent, our companies are permitted to engage in risk selection and rating practices which are often criticized. What is needed is a new regulatory framework to end these practices and achieve universal coverage. Indeed, universal coverage is the essential step towards ending these practices. Our customers are primarily individuals in small groups. Most large groups do not purchase health insurance, they're self-funded. The only way we can give you our best advice has been to listen, and listen very carefully to our customers. So what I want to share with you is not special pleading for insurers, but rather three suggested do's and don'ts from our customers' points of view. The first do is, all players must play by the same rules, including the government. Cost shifting from Medicare and Medicaid means higher health care costs for our customers. Second, government should define the essential benefit package which everyone should be guaranteed. Governments, not insurance purchasers or providers, should subsidize those who can't afford to buy coverage. And third, both employers and employees should be encouraged to make cost-effective decisions when they purchase insurance. Therefore, employers should be required to contribute to the costs of coverage for their employees, and employees should only be able to purchase insurance which supplements the essential benefit package by using after-tax dollars. And three don'ts. Don't require individuals and businesses to purchase their insurance only from a list approved by government-mandated purchasing groups. Continue to permit businesses to self-insure so long as they meet the same standards applied to all accountable health plans. Mandatory purchasing cooperatives would take years to create nationwide. Requiring them from the start would slow down achieving universal coverage and reduce the choice of plans available to individuals and groups. Second, don't insist on pure community rating. It would increase premiums for most groups, not what they're looking for in health reform. And pure community rating would increase premiums dramatically for younger workers whose standard of living we all want to increase, not lower. And third, don't regulate premium rates. Insurers earn less than two cents on the dollar over the last decade. Limiting premiums threatens company solvency, and therefore, our ability to continue to offer policies to our customers. In addition, such regulations would quickly dry up the flow of capital needed to finance expanded insurance coverage. Better ways to slow health care inflation are to apply outcomes research, expand managed care, reform the malpractice system, provide more primary care, emphasize prevention, curtail fraud and abuse, encourage electronic data interchange, target subsidies to certain employers and individuals, and last, but certainly not least, eliminate cost shifting by the government. In short, the Health Insurance Association of America looks forward to working with the President, the Congress, and the American public in achieving our mutual health reform goals just as soon as possible.
Thank you so much. Next, we call on Eric Gustafson, the President of the Independent Insurance Agents of America.
Good afternoon, Ms. Rasko. Members of the task force, thank you very much for having me here today. My name is Rick Gustafson. I'm an independent insurance agent and owner of Blake Insurance Agency in Portsmouth, New Hampshire. I'm also the elected president of the Independent Insurance Agents of America. Let me explain my role in this whole debate. As an agent providing insurance products, my job is to find the best coverage at the lowest price for my clients, consumers. As the owner of a small business, I also provide coverage for my own employees at the going rate, and I know that sometimes the best price is not very good at all. I also know from personal experience what it's like to choose between a lower rate and knowing one of my employees would not be covered. My association, the IIAA, opposes using pre-existing conditions as a means of determining coverage. Unlike some, our position is not a deathbed conversion. However, I will tell you that risk selection is due to rising health care costs and a segmented insurance market. Each of these things causes cost shifting. Millions of Americans without health coverage still need medical attention. Every time people who aren't covered go to a doctor or a hospital, the rest of us pay for it. Government programs and some insurers have arrangements where they pay less for the same care than others receive. I've served on a hospital board, and I know that to cover their costs, they'll have to charge more to other customers. This is where the $5 aspirin comes from. As a small business owner, I know what it's like to struggle and do the right thing by taking care of my employees. I have 25 people working for me. This is the most difficult-sized group to insure, and I can tell you that independent insurance agents don't have the skids greased for them just because of our ties to the industry. The elimination of pre-existing conditions is a determination of coverage. In conjunction with community rating of health insurance would work if the causes of the current situation were addressed by implementing cost savings, eliminating cost shifting, and expanding coverage to the uninsured so that premiums are paid for them as well. At the same time, we must preempt costly state mandates, provide incentives for all employers to cover their workers, and overhaul our nation's medical malpractice system. All of these things can be accomplished within a system of managed competition, but this type of system may cause new problems for me and other independent agents. In addition to health insurance, we also provide workers' compensation, auto and commercial liability coverage. All of these lines of insurance also pay a portion of our nation's health care costs. Any form of federal health reform must also take property casualty insurance concerns into consideration, although I think the system you are talking about could not withstand the additional risk. It's one thing to cover the general health costs of people. It's an entirely different case when you propose to also pay for employer obligations to injured workers or a poor decision made by a tired driver. You cannot community rate that kind of risk. I understand that in a managed competition system, consumers will get their insurance coverage through a large cooperative. However, there are also those who are satisfied with their current coverage. Moving from a traditional health care plan to an HMO, or moving from the personalized service of an independent agent to a large bureaucracy might not be what the doctor ordered for everyone. Choice and competition are still important. The independent insurance agents don't want special treatment. We just don't want to be managed out of the right to compete. Thank you once again. I'll be very happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Rick. Next, Mary Nell Leonard, Senior Vice President, Blue Cross Blue Shield Association.
This is Rasko, members of the panel. I'm Mary Nell Lenhard, Senior Vice President for the Blue Cross and Blue Shield Association. I'm here representing the 71 independent Blue Cross and Blue Shield plans and the 68 million Americans that they cover in their private business. The Blue Cross and Blue Shield Association has been supporting fundamental reform of the health care system for three years. First, we support universal coverage. We believe employers should provide at least a basic set of benefits to their employees, and we agree with you that small employers will need special assistance as they pick up this responsibility. Second, we support immediate and strict federal standards for health insurance companies. We believe that competition based on risk selection of the healthiest people and the healthiest groups has to stop. Insurers must be required to offer a basic set of benefits that stress preventive services, accept all applicants regardless of any pre-existing condition, not drop groups or individuals because of medical problems, not charge people more just because they're sicker, not impose waiting periods for pre-existing conditions when people change jobs or insurance companies. And finally, we should be required to move to an automated claim system where people never even have to touch a piece of paper. This would refocus the energy and the creativity of the private sector away from competition based on selection of the best risk and to true management of health care costs. Some insurers may decide to leave the market. Those who stay will have to make an immediate commitment to building delivery systems where people have their choice of high-quality, cost-effective providers. These insurance reforms, combined with the change in the tax treatment and employer-provided benefits, could achieve four out of five of the key elements of managed competition, almost immediately after enactment of a federal bill. The other major part of managed competition, the establishment of large purchasing cooperatives, primarily to support individual choice, could move forward as soon as possible, but it would take more time to create these new infrastructures and estates. Finally, price controls will not work as a cost containment strategy. We know from years of experience that providers can easily make up lost revenue from price controls by increasing the number of services they provide. In addition, price controls would totally destroy our ability to build a very structured networks that hold the best promise of truly controlling costs. In summary, we support fundamental change in the health care system that provides for universal coverage, assures health insurers are fully responsive to the needs of consumers, and puts in place incentives for more cost-effective delivery systems and incentives for how we all use medical care.
Thank you, Mary Nell. Earlier, the Vice President spoke about how nice it was to have a Tennessee focus, and I just want to say it's nice to have a U of A graduate here testifying. Thank you. We call next on Jack Moynihan, Executive Vice President.
Arkansas?
Arkansas, yes, that's right. Executive Vice President of Group Insurance Metropolitan Life Corporation on behalf of the Alliance for Managed Competition. Thank you, Jack.
Good afternoon, and thank you for this opportunity. I am Jack Moynihan, Executive VP at MedLife, and speaking on behalf of the Alliance for Managed Competition. Etna, Cigna, Prudential Travelers, and MedLife have formed this ad hoc coalition with the goal of working effectively toward the fundamental systemic reforms which are necessary to achieve a lastingly successful US health care system accessible to all Americans. We support your efforts to achieve that goal through the federal enactment of a reform bill based upon the principles of managed competition. Such a bill would provide the needed structure for a competitive market of private accountable health plans which integrate the delivering and the financing of health care. Through its provision of structure and requirements for accountability, managed competition allows competing private programs to bring to bear the creativity, innovation, and consumer responsiveness needed to meet the American citizen's expectations for full access to high-quality health care they can afford. Alliance members understand that operating as accountable health plans dramatically changes the way we do our business. We accept that, are committed to it, and have in fact already invested billions in the process. We are prepared to do more and to embrace and support additional reforms that a successful managed competition system will require. As we move forward, we counsel most sincerely against the employment of wage and price controls and like regulations, even those proposed for short-term use. They are ineffective, embed existing inefficiencies, stifle innovation, and deflect the investment of... of private capital, which is so necessary if we are to develop, grow, and expand accountable health plans across the country. Instead of looking to control and regulate, we should instead be driving energetically to a national system of accountable health plans providing continuously improving quality healthcare at competitively driven, affordable prices. Toward that end, members of the Alliance support legislation providing that access to private healthcare coverage would be assured through insurance reforms, providing availability, portability, continuity, and restricted use of pre-existing condition limitations. Legislation that would strengthen the purchasing power of individuals and small employers through the use of health insurance purchase cooperatives. Legislation that would make information available to consumers concerning competing health plans, pricing, and performance. That would put emphasis on preventive care, including immunization, and that would include Medicaid recipients in the health insurance purchase cooperatives, offering them access to the same quality private plans as those available to other Americans. We appreciate this opportunity to appear before this task force and commit ourselves to working with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack. Next, James Doherty, President, Group Health Association of America.
Thank you, Ms. Rasko. Thank you for the opportunity to appear here today. We in the HMO and managed care industry are pleased at the reported direction taken in the discussions thus far favors managed competition and an expanded role for our member plans. The main reason for our extraordinary success over the past two decades lies in the fact that our group enrollments are not underwritten nor are our enrollees excluded because of pre-existing conditions. This principle is an inherent characteristic of our programs, including those HMOs owned and operated by insurance companies. This requirement is reflected in the Federal HMO Act and in the various federal programs and state statutes. We hope that this administration and Congress will extend the same privileges to all persons in all programs as well as individuals. This is necessary so that all have access to affordable, quality healthcare and because it will appropriately level the playing field. We do hope that the members of this task force realize the important characteristics which distinguish the legislative and regulatory policies toward HMOs and managed care and those dealing with indemnity insurance. Direct responsibility for the provision of healthcare, prospective budgeting, defined rating systems, quality assurance requirements, and solvency requirements are a few examples of these distinct characteristics. Failure to consider these essential differences in the past have often put us in a legal or legislative quagmire, hampered our ability to operate in the private market, and does take valuable time and effort to correct. We look forward to working with this administration and the Congress as the work on healthcare reform proceeds. HMOs and similar managed care systems are an appropriate role model as they do enhance the quality, access, and value for all healthcare consumers. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to acknowledge that at the beginning of this panel, we were joined by Secretary Benson of the Treasury Department and Roger Altman, the deputy there. As we've heard you talk, I think we have listened to you answer the question put to you and know that people not being able to get insurance because of pre-existing conditions is fundamentally wrong. And we've heard a lot today, as well as in recent weeks as we've done our work, about all the many different forms, as well as micromanagement of healthcare providers through that. And we want to certainly ensure that all Americans will have comprehensive insurance coverage regardless of employment status or pre-existing conditions. On this issue of all the different forms, all the time that takes, we continue to hear that almost every panel, whatever group we hear from, and in recent weeks. And I wonder if any of you want to comment further on that, about ideas you've had. Bill?
There has been a substantial effort undertaken, particularly over the last year or so, to deal with this issue. You may recall the leadership taken on that question by the former Secretary of Health and Human Services, Dr. Lewis Sullivan. And there are three experiments taking place in different parts of the country to attempt to carry this forward and develop it in a way that can be used throughout the insurance industry. I would point out, however, that one of the elements of what we're talking about here today, which is the definition of a benefit package to which all Americans would be entitled, would enormously speed up the movement towards a nationwide system of electronic data interchange. We're often reminded quite properly of the high proportion of claims which are filed electronically by Medicare, and that's true, but that's a standard benefit package for 30 million people. And it is simply—I don't say it's impossible to do it otherwise, but it's a lot easier to do it if the benefit package is identical for all comers. So in that respect, I would suggest to you that one of the most important things to do early in the phasing in of this is—and it's not easy, we know that—is to define this benefit package.
I'd like to comment that when Dr. Elwood first conceived this notion of HMOs back in the early '70s, he came up with four principles from the existing prepaid group practice plans, and I think they're directly opposite today. And that is that they have to be organizations or entities which are prepaid, which offer comprehensive services, in which the healthcare is delivered in an organized fashion with appropriate uses of human and physical resources, as well as a defined population which permits budgeting and correct attitudes toward the organization—by the organization. I think those principles are just as applicable today, and you can have any variation on that theme you want that the market comes up with. And history has proven, in the HMO case, that during the last 20 years, we've had any number of forms, networks, IPAs, PPOs, and whatnot that have operated within those principles. I would hope that the committee would look at that history.
I would add one other element to this, and I would second what Bill Gradison said. There's a great deal of activity on electronic data interchange that's undergoing, that's going on right now and is increasing, as a matter of fact, and the commitment of a lot of organizations to enhancing that is there. I think it will be difficult, however, to get a single uniform system across the country, so we will have to devise a system of electronic communications that can accommodate not only the basic fundamental program but possibly also other programs that are written in support of that. One of the things that will greatly help the efficiency of the delivery system, however, is the organization of the healthcare delivery system itself. The alignment between the financing and the delivery of care and the cooperation between those who provide it and those who arrange for the programs under which it is provided lends the greatest opportunities for the elimination of what is referred to, perhaps justifiably, by the provider community as the hassle factor. Getting both programs on the same side of an objective to deliver quality healthcare at affordable rates to the consuming American public will go a long, long way to eliminating some of this very costly cross-checking and processing of paper and information.
Thank you. Did you have questions?
Yes. I'm curious about your comments on community rating, and this is a real dilemma, as you know, about how far one goes towards a total community rating. And I'd like to just ask the panel on a couple of different issues. Do you believe that people should pay in essentially the same rate regardless of how sick they are or what their pre-existing conditions are or whether their children may have pre-existing conditions? And do you believe that people should be able to maintain their coverage even if they develop a sickness or their child develops a sickness or whatever? That's question number one, has to do with community rating. Question number two is, what kind of differences would you make based upon age, if any? A pure community rating would say that a person would pay in the same amount regardless of age or regardless of sex or regardless of other demographic characteristics. Would you make a differentiation, and if so, how far would you go in that differentiation towards a full community rating versus what we have today?
I'd be glad to respond to that. We are supporting community rating, and I think the key thing to remember as you move to community rating is that it will be disruptive. Some groups, by definition, will have their rates go up, the younger, healthier groups, because you're bringing down the rates for the older, sicker groups. That's the whole point of community rating. You've got to go back to that averaging. We believe that the phase-in is extraordinarily important so that the public accepts this change in health policy. And we have taken the approach not so much of phasing it in by time, but by phasing it in by market segment. For example, we would say move to community rating for small groups of 2 to 50 or 100 in the beginning. To the extent you go to the individual market and bring those people into the small group market, you raise the rates for the small group market. To the extent you go to larger groups, you get more change. We think you should community rate the individual market, the small group market, and after that stabilizes, begin to look at more cross-subsidies across market lines, but don't do it all at once.
So you would advocate a complete community rating? Would you include the over-65 population in that group?
No, that would raise—the whole point of community rating is to make it more affordable for people. To the extent you bring in the Medicare population, their rates may be eight times higher than someone in their 20s, mid-20s, or the average person in a small group. We don't think that that should be brought into the community rating. In fact, as I mentioned, we would go slow and just include small groups and individuals separately in the beginning.
Mr. Gradison.
Thank you, Mr. Mag. Thank you, Mr. Magaziner. I would first like to call to your attention a study prepared by the American Academy of Actuaries and shared with Mr. Thorpe on the 23rd, which indicates that with mandatory coverage, universal coverage, 2/3 of groups of less than 25 employees plus about 2/3 of individuals would experience increases in their premiums if we went to pure community rating, at least initially. It's very disruptive. I think frankly it would be a very hard sell. In the state of New York, where they are moving in this direction with the new—with new requirements that take effect the 1st of April, there are already reports of increases in premiums for the—I'm just referring to the news articles, 170% increase for the 25-year-old healthy taxi driver, things of that kind. I think community rating, if it's taken that far, would be so controversial as to undermine support for the entire plan.
How far would you take it, I guess?
I'm not positive, but let me share some thoughts. First of all, I would definitely take into account age for the non-Medicare population. I certainly would take into account geography, which is—a—which has to do with the price. Price of medical—the cost of medical care varies enormously from community to community. With regard to individual policies, I think we've got a very difficult issue, and let me just phrase it what it is. If it's pure community rating, it would mean that those who do not smoke, who do not drink, who do not abuse controlled substances would be paying the same rate as those that do. I think that also is not only a hard sell but rather unfair and inconsistent with the emphasis which all of us want to put on prevention and self-responsibility. Much the same point can be made at the corporate level, and it's being made to us by our customers. Just a few days ago, I heard from a large customer, a large business, which is spending a great deal of money on wellness programs. Now, part of it is that they care about their people and their communities, and I'm not trying to minimize that, but they also hope they'll save some money on their insurance. If you say to them, "Your insurance rate's the same whether you have a wellness program as you don't have a wellness program," you have to ask yourself, "Will there be as many wellness programs?" I appreciate I'm not fully answering your question, but we would think that within narrow bands, something along the lines that many states have recently adopted for small group reform, might not be inappropriate. That is to say, a very small consideration of experience rating—it could be really quite small, but it's enough that you could make the point that if you do a better job keeping your people healthy, that you'll get a better rate, might be worth considering.
Just to clarify, the pre-existing condition issue and the dropping of people—
No. I'm sorry, let me restate that because I want to make that absolutely clear. We—once-covered people must continue to be covered. They should have coverage which they can take to a new job. Pre-existing conditions would not be taken into account. I think the question is, what rate does the group pay in year two as compared with a group year one, and what do they pay as compared with the business next door?
I'd like to comment on the community rating question. We've been community rated by law and tradition since well before 1973. First of all, community rating started out as a budgetary convenience in that you had a defined population. You could figure out what your per-member-per-month cost for delivering the healthcare were, and then you could composite those rates, as you must give some consideration to—composite those rates based on family size, based on individuals. We found in 1973 that that didn't work in a competitive market. So in 1976, we asked for, and the Congress gave us, an adjusted community rating by class concept where we could make allowances for the various age and sex differentials within our populations and negotiate those kinds of things with employers. Then the third thing that happened was is that as the market became more competitive, we went back to the Congress and asked for additional relief. And the latest version is we now have a third type of community rating, which is called an adjusted community rating. Now, we are required by law for our Medicare populations under the Tefra program—and we're working with Secretary Shalala's office on this—to try to have a community rating concept for our Medicare population, an adjusted community rating. This includes age and intensity factors for the elderly population. We are required beyond that community rate to put additional—to put any money that is saved or any profits—with a small "P"—into additional benefits for the elderly. It's been a very successful program, but the trick of your question and the difficulty of your question has to do with the risk factors. We have been working since 1982 with the Department of Health, Education, and Welfare, now Health and Human Services, in trying to get a decent formula which can act as a proxy for a defined population, an elderly population. We have been unable to do so, not because of a stubborn, over-regulatory government, but simply because it's one heck of a hard job to do. And there are a number of new ideas that have come in and that we are working with, and we hope that the secretary will allow some demonstrations of these new formulas. But I think your whole managed competition rises or falls on your ability to try to figure out what these risk factors are for defined groups.
I'd like to comment on that from the standpoint of a small business. As I said before, I have 25 employees. I think the issue is we've got to see that we don't allow segmentation of the market. Clearly, I'm not capable at this point of talking about the actuarial need for rates and whether or not there should be differences between experience of particular accounts or, for that matter, the age or whatever, the lifestyles of people. Undoubtedly, there could be some ways to take that into consideration as long as everybody has to use the same rules. Because if we don't—if we allow one provider, insurance company or whatever, to use a different set of rules than another, inevitably you have a situation where people will seek out that provider and avail themselves of lower prices. In my office, I have a situation right now where one of my employees has a dependent, very serious, costly, chronic illness. Literally, in my office, I can save $25,000 of hard-earned money if I were to move my medical plan to a provider that would exclude that. I can't do that to that person, but this is the dilemma that people like me face.
Other some of the panel have questions?
Yes, let me pursue that a bit longer. Bill, you were talking about giving the widest possible options to someone—the individual or business—in trying to decide whether to join the HIPIC. Would you not anticipate with that kind of opening that you'd get substantial adverse selection?
Mr. Secretary, first off, I think we have to recognize that there is going—if only by the law of averages—to be adverse selection within the HIPIC, and therefore that there has to be an arrangement thought out to—through reinsurance or some kind of a risk-adjusted premium even within the HIPIC—to make adjustments for just the fact that some groups may get the younger ones, some may get somewhat older ones, or whatever. I would apply the same thinking to the groups which are outside the HIPICs. I would suggest a couple of things. First of all, those accountable—first off, any accountable—any health plan has to be an accountable health plan, whether it's offered inside or outside of the HIPICs. So I'm not suggesting that there would be any difference. But I think there has to be a reckoning probably once a year among those plans so that if there is adverse selection from the inside to the outside or vice versa, it is balanced off either through some risk adjustment feature or through reinsurance. Another thing that might help to prevent gaming would be to say that a group, for example, which is self-insured, can't switch back to the HIPIC right away. In other words, you couldn't move back and forth year by year. You might say, "If you're in the HIPIC, you've got to stay three years. If you're outside, you've got to stay three years," in order to minimize the gaming. I have to say to Mr. Secretary, I'm really troubled by the idea of limiting the current ability which employers have to self-insure. We sell insurance. We'd love to have those folks forced to come to us, but I think in terms of selling your plan, to go to employers who have provided insurance and who may have 100 or 200 or 800 employees and tell them they can only buy from the— 800 employees, and tell them they can only buy from the list which is made available by these exclusive government monopolies called HIPICs, I think that's a real tough sell.
Let me ask another one then. As you go to community, community ratings, we were talking about the variances, whether you have age in there, or whether you have regions in there, or other factors. There must be at some point, a limitation on the tolerance for the variants. Is there way to, what would be its subjective judgment, but what could I get from you in the way of estimates as to the degree of tolerance, as you package this thing, to try to go to community ratings?
We are currently looking at, as I said, community rating, that means no adjustment at all for claims utilization or health experience. Within that community rate, we would say you could make adjustments for demographics, which is a defined, you can look at a table, the age, for example, and we're currently looking at limits of four to one and two to one, that you couldn't adjust your rate any more than 200% either way, well, in total. On top of that, you do need a geographic adjustment. Your, your costs within a state will vary tremendously from a rural area to a teaching urban center, and we think it's not fair to ask that much cross subsidy of the residents of the state.
Let me ask one of Mr. Gustafson, because one of your comments I did not quite follow. You know that in Minnesota, California, some other states are looking for ways to fold the health components of workers' comp and auto insurance into their health reform plans. Yet as I understand your statement, you argue that such a move would pose great risk to the financial stability of the new program. Would you amplify that?
Yes.
Why do you think that?
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. First of all, there's a substantial amount of healthcare dollars presently being paid by people through the workers' comp system, and through auto liability, general liability, and so on. We're concerned, number one, that those dollars going into the healthcare system in one shot, where they're currently being paid outside of the healthcare system, as far as the insurance side, or the self-insurance side of healthcare, could put a real jolt to that. We're more concerned, however, particularly in workers' compensation, where right now, an employer pays premium for workers' compensation, commensurate with not only the type of business that they're in, but very clearly, the experience that they've had. You might have a, an employer, for example, with employees, young, healthy people, under a traditional medical system, or an HMO, would be very, very desirable customers, very desirable people to insure, but that person may be in the roofing business, or a steeplejack, or a bridge contractor, that the nature of the business is extremely dangerous, and can cause serious injury. Right now, that employer pays premium, commensurate with not just the people and their medical needs that they would normally have as individuals, but they pay premium, commensurate with the risk of the type of business that it has. So we're concerned that if something is done all at once, that doesn't take that into consideration over a very gradual period of time, that it can put a tremendous strain on the healthcare system. We'd also say, at the same time, however, because of the same segmentation that I spoke about a minute ago, that we can't allow costs to be shifted by the health provider system over to the workers' compensation, or auto, or general liability side, because if that's allowed to be hap, to happen, those costs are going to be unsustainable as well. So we, we raise the caution, we ask that very careful consideration be given to that situation.
Thank you.
I wonder, I wonder if I might add something at this point, if I may, on two issues that I think are rather critical. The first is on the issue of community rating. I completely agree that community rating by class is an appropriate way to go, that a sudden move to that direction is full of problems and full of difficulties, and a sudden move certainly to pure community rating is highly problematic, and that will be seen, I think, in the state of New York. We have, the point I wish to make, an obligation, I think, to keep in mind the market, the American public, and how they will perceive what we do as we reform the system. Anything that we do that radically upsets their view of fairness, I think we should think about very, very carefully.
Well, I had one of the fellows testify in for our committee, for the Finance Committee, talking about, phrased it as sticker shock. And I think that's appropriate. If you go too far, obviously, you're going to lose confidence in the system.
Second thing, I agree with that. The, the second thing I wanted to mention is the importance of the Health Insurance Purchase Corporation. The definition of managed competition has to do with setting up a marketplace structure in which the, the purchase and acquisition of health insurance coverage is an enhanced activity compared to what it has been historically. Small employers and individuals have been at some disadvantage compared to large employers who are able to purchase their health plans much more intelligently, and on a much more informed basis. That is the purpose of the HIPIC. And I think that we should take care to be certain that the HIPIC has given every opportunity to succeed, and be available to, to all of the individuals and small employers. Large employers, and the concept of managed competition that, that we adhere to, are large enough and able to, to take care of themselves in the purchase of their health programs, and they have historically. We, as an individual company, deal extensively with large employers, and can tell you firsthand that they are very intelligent buyers. This program shouldn't be intended to take away that ability of theirs to buy healthcare intelligently and effectively, and so forth. That's not the intention. It is the intention, however, I believe, to enhance the structure of the marketplace for healthcare, to put the individual and the small employer on an even keel with the marketers of health programs, so that the purchase is on an even keel basis.
Dr. Tyson.
I guess my question would be about what you think the implications of some of the reforms that we're talking about will be for your industry, for the structure of the insurance industry, and for employment in the insurance industry. And, and the things I, we're talking about, some reforms which might just be in the insurance industry itself, and then we've talked about guaranteed issue, or renewability, or portability, or some movement towards some community rating. Then we've also talked about managed competition and HIPICs. I guess I would like to get your views on what you think the implications are for the industry, the insurance industry itself, its structure, and its employment.
If I may begin, first of all, I think that a phased-in move towards managed competition, as I understand managed competition from the President's earlier statements, would not dramatically affect employment levels one way or the other. I feel very strongly that the imposition of price and wage controls on providers or premium caps would virtually assure that these entities, as employers, would slam on the brakes, if, if only to wait and see and try to figure out what these things mean. And I would suggest that doing so, at a time when we're so concerned about jobs, at a time when there are so many jobs already being lost through defense cutbacks, might not be the wisest short-term of, of public policy. It is often said, looking at this issue, that this is a question of large versus small. I, I really don't think that's the case. It seems to me that the key to whether an insurance company succeeds in meeting, staying in business, remains solvent, and serves the needs of, of people in the future, really comes down to management and their ability to adjust in new circumstances. A small company that provides good service, that has an excellent network, pays its claims on time, answers its telephone, and has some significant amount of market penetration in individual markets, I think is going to be around for a long time. And I'm not saying that 1% of the market assures you're going to succeed, but I'd say if you're good enough to have 10, 15% of a market, the big boys aren't going to chase you out by any matter of means. One thing we see developing, and I didn't know this when I first came on this job on February 1st, is the development of organizations which create networks, and then rent their use in individual markets to others. I met just Thursday with an organization which does just this, and they have over 2 million Americans covered by networks which are rented from an organization, and even some of the largest insurance companies in individual markets have apparently found it less expensive to rent, it's a make-or-buy decision in the traditional sense, that's sometimes less expensive to go in and do that than to create your total network. So, will there be less insurers, probably? Will the large control everything and the small fail? I truly do not believe that will be the case.
I would, as one of the larger insurers, agree 100% with what Bill Gradison has just said. Yes, there probably will be a consolidation of the industry, because those of us who will continue to be active in the industry will need to change, and we will have to respond in innovative ways. Some may choose not to do that, others may. But I will tell you, as a larger insurer, some of the most difficult and tough and aggressive competition that we face, both in terms of quality and in terms of price, comes from very small organizations in local marketplaces. I was thinking about this the other day, and I said, "Who would have thought some time ago, that one of the largest information processing and data organizations in the country, IBM, would have to deal with the assault from smaller data processing and information management companies, such as Microsoft and Apple?" We need to be, as large insurance companies, very much aware of the fact that we're in a competitive game, that we might win and we might lose, but we're prepared to go ahead and compete.
Ms. Tyson, could I just say, I'm not an insurance company person, I'm, I'm an agent, and that means a lot of things to a lot of people I know. I can say that the, the exclusivity of the HIPICs would mean the difference between people like me being out of business in the health insurance field, and maybe some others, or not, depending on whether there was a true choice being offered. We have to, to make our money, if you will, convincing people, one person at a time, to do business with us and to, to use our services. It's a very personal thing. If we don't even have the chance to talk to individual customers, and allow them to make the choice to do business with us, if the HIPICs are the exclusive way to do business, then it would be devastating on independent agents, and on healthcare agents who specialized in that. If, on the other hand, true choice was offered, on whatever basis, and people like me could compete for the customer, then we'd take our chances, just like we've been doing for 100 years. So I would say, it depends entirely on whether or not this is an exclusive system, or whether it offers true, true choice.
We, we don't happen to be agents, but I want to say a word about what agents do, especially for smaller businesses. The agent generally is the one that helps select the plan, produces a range of choices, meets the needs of the customer, but does a lot more than that. The agent generally develops the material which is used to inform the employees about the plan, holds meetings, signs them up, helps them work through the complications of filing claims. This is value-added. Now, maybe the HIPICs are going to do that same thing for everybody, but I think the notion of looking at agents and saying, "Ah, here's a couple hundred thousand people we can eliminate, they don't provide any useful service," represents a misunderstanding of their true economic function and the value which they add for their customers.
Let me ask you on that, if I may. When you talk about the creation of non-exclusive HIPICs, and independent agent competition, how does that work, with the apparent need to have pooling risk, to have the pooling of it, to reduce costs? Aren't those contradictory?
Well, Mr. Secretary, I suppose everything is contradictory at some point in time. I don't know that we have the answer to that. We can look at what's happened in California with CalPERS, however, and that system, as I understand it, could be thought of in some ways as a, as a workshop for this sort of thing. It's my understanding that in California, it is not an exclusive remedy. In other words, a person can choose to do business with what amounts to the HIPIC in CalPERS, or can do business through private insurance in, in the normal way, but that the coverage being offered and the rules, so to speak, are the same. It's my understanding that that system has less than 50% of the policyholders, the people insured currently through the HIPIC, and about 55% of them still continue to do business with their agent on some basis. It's also my understanding that that system has still been quite successful in cutting costs down to something like 50% of the increase that, that we've seen in other parts of the country. So that if we look at that as a possible workshop, if you will, a possible pilot, it looks like it could be done. But I must admit, we have no specific proposals at this point, although we will, as we have said, be filing additional information regarding that.
Mr. Secretary, there are some other serious problems with the exclusive HIPICs that would rearrange some very satisfactory methods of getting insurance today. I met the other day with a gentleman from an organ, from a national farm organization. They offer health insurance policies to farmers, and they have 40,000 farmers nationwide that participate. An exclusive HIPIC arrangement would say, "You cannot do that. You cannot have a nationwide plan for hardware stores, or for farmers. You've got, the farmer would have to go through the exclusive HIPIC." And more than that, that HIPIC, at least according to some of the alternatives which we believe are being considered, would have extraordinary power. It could, for example, leave out from the approved list otherwise accountable health plans, because they didn't want to offer too many, or they thought the price was too high, rather than letting the purchaser decide if the price is too high. And in some versions, there would be a prohibition on a HIPIC offering more than one fee-for-service plan. I mean, either we're going to have it competitive or not. And the notion, to me, it's frankly somewhat outrageous that if there is a system of exclusive HIPICs, that they would have life-or-death power over plans which might otherwise meet the standards of accountable health plan, but were just rejected somewhat artificially and arbitrarily by these new government-created bureaucracies.
I would just add something. There are a number of ways to approach the issue of HIPICs and how they should be employed, and one of them does include the, an obligation on the part of a HIPIC to offer any program which becomes established and certified, if you will, under some mechanism, as an accountable health plan. So there are ways to come at some of these issues that are difficult indeed. I think, you know, in the situation where the, the agent adds value to his consumer and his customer, there will always be a value to that customer, and we support that. There's no indication, for those of us who are in favor of managed competition, that needs to be any other way. The concern that is expressed by some relative to the success ultimately of the HIPIC, has to do with whether or not, in the process of the marketplace, underwriting outside of the HIPIC environment will allow some skimming and some advantage-taking in the marketplace that would put the HIPIC at a disadvantage, possibly wind up with the HIPIC suffering an adverse spiral of selection. These are things that must be considered.
Mr. Secretary, I would make one more comment on the HIPICs. We're very supportive of seeing what HIPICs can do, but we do think the HIPICs, as you can tell, are going to be extremely controversial in communities. It will mean an employee changing their relationship from their employer, their benefit manager, to something that's run as a quasi-governmental entity. We think that may be the way of the future, but we do think it's too high-risk to hang all of the reform success potential on the creation of a HIPIC, having one up and running in every state. We think you, as I said in my statement, we think you can move ahead with a key element of managed competition, and then move on HIPICs on a separate, but not slow track, let states do it voluntarily, get some experience, get some experience for sure, before you turn over large metropolitan areas to the HIPICs, but move ahead with the key elements of managed competition, the insurance reforms, the tax cap. We think you can have both, but have it with more certainty and more comfort for the public.
I would just, if I can add one other thing to this, I'm sorry, Mr. Secretary, but it's kind of important, I think. As we look at the issue of managed competition, we tend to think about managed competition perhaps more than we should. We sometimes think about HIPICs, and we talk about those perhaps more than we should, when compared to the fundamental engine that is proposed as the underlying foundation and strength and the future of systemic reform to the healthcare system in the United States that will ultimately make it quality healthcare at an affordable price. That is, the accountable health partnership. We tend to get our eye moved over to a lot of the structure around the market, and sort of take for granted, or ignore, the need for the development of accountable health plans that will actually bring about the integration of the delivery and the financing of healthcare. That is where ultimate systemic and lasting reform lies, and I would hope that we not get, not get ourselves too diverted from that basic foundation block of reform.
One of the concerns that Dr. Tyson raised in her question, and I think Mr. Moynihan is getting around to it, is that you look at the accountable health plan, or whatever else you want to call the managed care system...
else you want to call the managed care system, and just as you're concerned about employment disruption on the insurance side, the indemnity side, and the broker side, we do have some concerns about the question as to whether or not the accountable health plans are in a position to absorb huge new populations in a short period of time. In the HMO business, there's a saying that the only thing worse than under-enrollment is over-enrollment because you simply don't have the personnel to handle these things. We've talked a bit about the shortage of primary care practitioners, but we also need people who are administrators in both, as Mr. Moynihan can tell you, who know something not only about the financing of healthcare, but know something about the delivery and provision and contracting for healthcare, who know something about quality. These are very unique kinds of characteristics, so that you can't just rush headlong into a new system that's going to create lots and lots of these things on an overnight basis.
Well, I think those are the most helpful comments. Thank you very much.
Secretary Shalala.
I just want to pursue that a little longer and see what each of you would do about rural areas where we do have a low number of providers, where it's difficult to create a system in which there obviously is some competition, and see how much you've thought about other parts of the country where the traditional managed competition framework may not fit as well.
If I may start just briefly, while the theoretical construct of managed competition may not exactly fit, I think the notion of managed care can fit. And I would call to your attention, although you probably have already studied it, the experience in large parts of the states of Minnesota and New Mexico. I think there are models out there from which we could, can learn, that suggest that rural areas can see a substantial improvement in the quality of healthcare and gain some of the advantages from the concepts of managed care. A portion of my former district was very rural, but the hospital had, the very small rural hospital, had a contractual arrangement with the tertiary care hospital 100 miles away. There were specialists that came in on a rotating basis, not full-time. The county wouldn't have supported that, the county had $25,000. But there are lots of informal arrangements taking place now that I think can be replicated to the advantages of rural areas all over the United States.
I would comment also that we are finding a tremendous role for allied health professionals in this respect. And as Bill said, the issue is almost not so much cost as quality. The primary care physician becomes the gatekeeper for referring someone to a network in the city, making sure they're not lost in all the high-tech complications. And we've also found tremendous experience in using nurse practitioners and physician assistants as that manager or coordinator of the care in the rural area. But much like Medicare rural clinic provisions require, you have to make sure that person has the backup. In this case, it would be the backup of an accountable health plan, but very critical, one person to make sure that person's total range of healthcare services, preventive to chronic, are coordinated.
I would just add that it seems to us that the use and growth of the accountable health partnership offers more avenues to solving the problem of quality healthcare reaching rural areas than almost any other that we can think of. One particular advantage is the ability to recruit physicians as part of a larger organization to be placed in rural areas, connected with a larger plan, with support in terms of diagnostic support and peer interchange and so forth, having the opportunity in such simple things as being able to get relief to take a week off and vacation, which some rural physicians find it extremely difficult to do when they don't have the support of a larger group. There are a number of ways in which things open up under accountable health partnerships that will help solve that problem.
You also have to give some attention to regulatory flexibility. We have a number of examples where HMOs try to develop rural HMOs or subsets through a satellite kind of mechanism. One that comes to mind is in Albany, New York, and they've entered the Hudson Valley with a number of marvelous little centers where people in rural areas are created, but they had to kind of run around HHS because the regulators insisted that these had to be full-blown HMOs in the rural areas. So it was kind of the Pogo Principle, that HHS was criticizing us for not doing this, but yet putting the regulatory roadblocks in a way. And I think you have to look at a regulatory scheme which is going to allow the kind of flexibility that some of these HMOs and managed care systems need in order to expand into rural areas and to serve that population.
That's the old HHS, not the new HHS.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear.
Can I just ask two quick questions, which are among the most vexing we have, and you've raised issues about them? One dilemma we have is that, this question of the size of the purchasing cooperative. And while we can talk about putting pieces of managed competition in place, it's very difficult if the purchasing cooperative gets created in such a way that it becomes severely adversely selected, and then it's doomed to failure. On the other hand, if we try to maintain as much choice in that as you would like, and I understand the reasons for doing that, you almost guarantee it's going to be adversely selected. So I'm curious to hear more about that dilemma.
I don't think the size is a key factor in the risk of adverse selection. I acknowledge there's that risk. But I think what you need to do is build in a mechanism so that, to the extent that that exists, it can be corrected by some kind of a risk-adjusted premium arrangement or some kind of a reinsurance arrangement. Or perhaps the simplest way, conceptually, is the super, somehow of a superstructure with regard to high-risk cases, high-cost cases is a better way to say it, that would average this out between the groups that are outside and the groups that are inside. The purpose of skipping, the purpose of this whole issue isn't to argue against the creation of the HIPICs. It is to argue that they should not be mandatory, government-created, exclusive entities. And we can think of a number of ways to deal with this so that, to the extent that there is adverse selection, it can be taken care of. I do not agree with you in the way you phrase this question. I do not think that a HIPIC is doomed to failure. If there is choice about whether to enter it or not, it would be doomed to failure if there is no way to take into account any adverse selection which might indeed occur.
So you allow that there might be adverse selection, but what you're suggesting is that they're built in some other mechanisms to take care of that adverse selection?
Absolutely.
I would like to build on that just for a moment. I know time is short, but I'd make the case that even if you had exclusive HIPICs, there stills the possibility for adverse selection on the other end. Everything we've talked about so far deals with selecting new people to come in, but there's nothing to say that if we don't have proper safeguards, that there won't be just as much effort made by an existing provider once they've accepted the client to get rid of them if it turns out that they're a very expensive person to insure. So there has to be safeguards either way.
I would agree with that. Inside the HIPIC, a risk-adjustment mechanism is definitely going to be required. It just seems it's probably better to have it operate inside the HIPIC as opposed to inside and outside the HIPIC.
I would comment also, we are very active in the very parts of the market that would go into the HIPIC, and we don't think reinsurance is a good idea, reinsurance of high-cost claims. What you want is a carrier who has to manage all of the claims and has an incentive when they see someone coming in that has a very high-cost medical condition, that they know they're going to be responsible for all of the claims incurred by that person, and really focus on managing it, not moving it into the reinsurance pool. The second point is, we know there'd be adverse selection. There's tremendous adverse selection in the federal employees' health benefits program, and we have been working for years on a risk adjuster. And we know that the risk adjusters that exist are not powerful. They account for only about 20% of the adverse selection. And let me give you one number that shows you how important risk selection is. In any population, 4% of the people will account for 50% of the claim's cost. And if, for whatever reason, you end up with part of that, the high-cost claims, you can be put out of business very quickly unless there's some sort of risk adjuster. And this is why we've advocated moving with the parts of managed competition we know about and getting some more experience with the risk adjuster and other issues.
But in that case, you'd almost have to do something retroactive, as Mr. Gradison indicated earlier.
It's always difficult.
I think that's a safe, honest way to do it with our present state of knowledge, frankly.
It's always difficult to cut off good dialogue, but that is a reminder that if any of you have additional materials you would like to turn in, we would be very appreciative of those. And we want to thank each of you for your input today. Thank you. We will move to Panel Seven that will ask to have come to the table now, and Secretary Shalala will preside. We'd like to welcome the representatives of the pharmaceutical industry. Robert Allnut, Executive Vice President of Pharmaceutical Manufacturers Association, PMA, will begin his presentation. I'll introduce each of you in order. The question that we posed to you was, why are prescription drugs so much more expensive in this country than in other countries?
We believe that every American should have prescription drug coverage. More than 70 million Americans lack any such coverage. Those 70 million disproportionately include the elderly and the poor, and that must change. We believe that every FDA-approved drug should be included in the standard benefit package to be provided under managed competition, that there should be a prescription drug benefit under Medicare in the managed competition setting or otherwise. If Medicaid is to remain freestanding, we support Medicaid prescription drug coverage up to at least 100% of the federal poverty level. A managed competition system will contain costs effectively in the long run. We recognize the need for healthcare cost containment during the period of transition to managed competition, and we're willing to do our part. Price increases have already slowed dramatically. In December, the PMA Board of Directors unanimously directed the staff, acting within the constraints of the antitrust laws, to urge President-elect Clinton to seek voluntary, independent pledges from each company to hold price increases at or below the inflation rate. The administration has not as yet seen fit to take this step. Our only other option to achieve auditable and enforceable voluntary, industry-wide restraint is to request Justice Department clearance under the antitrust laws to agree among ourselves to do so, and we have requested that clearance. We urge the administration to support us on one of these two paths to cost containment in the transition period. We do oppose government price regulation. Price controls on medicines would have immediate impacts on the amount and the very nature of research, biasing research toward low-risk, low-benefit new products. And regulation of new product prices would have a particularly devastating impact on new entrance in the biotechnology industry, which has been one of our country's most promising emerging growth industries. Fears of price controls have already profoundly affected the capital markets. In the past, drug prices in industrialized countries tended to vary fairly widely based on local market conditions. However, a study we've submitted to Mr. Magaziner shows that introductory prices in recent years have been virtually identical in the U.S. and Europe. Of the 20 most prescribed drugs in 1991 around the world, 15 are priced highest in Europe, Canada, or Japan, the other five in the United States. According to the OECD, U.S. per capita expenditures on pharmaceuticals are about average in the industrialized world. Many developing countries, including Mexico until quite recently, allowed patent pirates to freely manufacture and sell patented drugs of U.S. and European companies. This results in unrealistically low prices. In such countries, and in any country with an extremely low standard of living, a company is faced with the choice of either marketing its product at a concessionary price or denying patients in that country the medical benefits of the product. These are complex issues. My time is up. I have a more detailed statement, and I urge the panel to read it.
We appreciate your comments. Dee Fenster, President of the Generic Pharmaceutical Industry Association.
Thank you, Secretary Shalala. I'd like to thank the task force for this opportunity to present our views today. The generic industry has been a long-term advocate of a prescription drug benefit for Medicare recipients, and we are in support of including pharmaceuticals in any standard health reform benefit package. Generic companies sell their products in a fiercely competitive marketplace which is entirely different from the market for brand-aimed drugs. A soon-to-be-released study shows, for example, that in 1988, the wholesale price for 100 tablets of Endorol for hypertension was $37.97. The generic cost $4. By 1992, the price of the brand had increased 51% to $57.36, and the price of the generic had decreased to $1.84. These price differences illustrate that there are really two pharmaceutical industries in the United States. Both make products certified by the federal government as safe, effective, and medically equivalent to one another, but it is only the generic industry that has been engaging in true competition. To take advantage of this competition, the United States needs to do one very simple thing: stop reimbursing two industries for the same product at two different prices. Instead, any pharmaceutical benefit for Americans needs to foster competition by setting a single reimbursement price for each multiple-source product. Single-price reimbursement is increasingly used in private sector programs. Medicaid, however, has a two-tier reimbursement system that has been called by pharmacy organizations, the only prescription drug coverage program in the country that provides an incentive to dispense higher-cost, brand, multiple-source drugs. Using the Endorol example, Medicaid now reimburses pharmacies approximately $67.36, but pays them only $2.33 for the generic equivalent. When competition works, it should be nurtured. The establishment of a national open formulary for multiple-source drugs would be a good first step. In addition, disincentives and unnecessary price restraints must be removed. Mandatory rebates, which should never have been imposed in the first place on generic companies, are having the most negative effect on the most competitively-priced products and driving them from the marketplace. Finally, we believe there must be some national standards that preempt ad hoc and conflicting state actions which are interfering with true competition. We believe there should be a national policy which provides for a single competitive environment for pharmaceuticals, and we believe that will ensure predictable cost control. Thank you again. I'll be glad to answer your questions.
Thank you very much. Dr. Charles West, Executive Vice President of the National Association of Retail Drugs.
Thank you, Secretary Shalala. We believe that one important reason why prescription drugs are so much more expensive in this country than in other countries is due to the widespread discriminatory pricing practices of the nation's pharmaceutical manufacturers. It is common for drug manufacturers to sell the same quantities of the same medications to hospitals, clinics, HMOs, middle-order pharmacies, and others at prices 30% to 90% below the price paid by community retail pharmacies. The lower the price offered to these retail pharmacy competitors, the higher the price will be to community pharmacies and thus to most consumers. These preferred prices are not offered on the basis of volume. They are bogus classes of trade devised by the pharmaceutical manufacturers to conceal illegal price discrimination, and these special prices are not, by the way, passed on either to payors or to consumers. So we don't really have to look at foreign markets to see unjustifiable radical differences in the costs of prescription drugs. If fair pricing practices were established, for example, by adopting the current average manufacturer's price as the price for the product, subject only to legitimate economies of scale, and allowing retail pharmacy buying groups access to these economies of scale, the bulk of American consumers would realize significant savings in the cost of their community retail pharmacy services. Given the present condition of our marketplace, it is certainly understandable why the Community Retail Pharmacy Healthcare Reform Coalition, which represents all pharmacies and pharmacists practicing in outpatient settings, both chain and independent, has included, as one of its four principles essential to healthcare reform, the elimination of discriminatory pricing practices by pharmaceutical manufacturers. Discrimatory pricing practices are driving community retail pharmacies out of business. They are promoting the proliferation of remote, inaccessible, monopolistic systems that do nothing more than distribute products, depriving nothing more than distribute products, depriving consumers of the personalized, professional, cost-effective care they have come to expect from their neighborhood pharmacist. But healthcare is personal. If it's to remain so, we must ensure that consumers continue to have access to their community retail pharmacist, who is the most accessible member of the healthcare team in every neighborhood in this country. To ensure that access and to contain the rising price of prescription drugs, the discriminatory pricing practices of the nation's pharmaceutical manufacturers must be eliminated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll hear from G. Kirk Rab, who is Chair of the Healthcare Reform Committee, I assume, and a member of the Board of Directors of the Industrial Biotechnology Association.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I congratulate the administration, the task force, for finally taking action on something that's been talked about by presidents since President Truman. Another exciting event is that, for the first time since human beings were able to walk upright, we're able to deal with genetic diseases as a result of the science behind biotechnology. And I represent close to 1,000 companies that are working on this. We, as companies, as active people in healthcare, recognize the inequities in healthcare support for people in our country, and we support increased access and recognize the importance of cost controls. We've demonstrated that. Our prices are not higher in the United States than they are in Europe. We have not increased our prices in our history since we've been in business, which has been close to 10 years, and over every one of us supply to a patient who cannot afford our drugs products-free. As a matter of fact, my company has given over $100 million of our three products away free since we began selling products seven years ago. But we're a very fragile industry, and you may wonder, what difference does it make to you, sort of so what, that you're fragile? Well, the so what is that with our new products, if there are price controls imposed on new products from our industry, there is a high chance that people with AIDS, with cancer, with arthritis, with genetic disease like multiple sclerosis or cystic fibrosis, and I could go on and on, Alzheimer's, ALS, and others, will be denied the benefits that come from our research and development. Cystic fibrosis is a fascinating example. In the '50s, the average lifespan was 10 years with cystic fibrosis. Antibiotics have expanded this until it's close to 30 today, but 30 is a very young age. We have a new drug coming from our industry that's going to help that, but we're working on genetic therapy that will cure that disease. We're on the cutting edge, but we have a problem, and that is price controls will eliminate from us access to the capital markets. We do not have a positive cash flow in our industry and its pension funds and mutual funds where we need to source funds for our future. I think it's important to mention to you that price controls not only will kill our industry, but it has the potential to kill the patients who could benefit from the products that we will discover and develop, and we hope you take seriously this very serious expression of concern. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Rab. I note you chair the Board of the University of California in San Francisco, and we thank you for contributing the new Assistant Secretary of Health. Dr. Gans, Dr. John Gans, Executive Vice President of the American Pharmaceutical Association.
Thank you, Secretary Shalala. It's my pleasure to present these comments on behalf of seven national pharmacist organizations and over 50 state affiliates throughout the country. We agree that there must be fundamental change in healthcare and that escalating drug prices represent a serious problem for the American public. Pharmaceuticals and services provided by pharmacists are among the most accessible and cost component of healthcare. Consequently, we urge that they be included as part of the core benefit for all Americans. The attention to date has been too narrowly focused, we believe, on escalating drug cost and whether drugs should be a part of the core benefit package. The remainder of my comments will address how pharmacists have, when appropriately empowered, reduced the cost, increased the access, and improved the quality of care. Rather than drawing on international pricing comparisons, we think it's more relevant to examine the price differences in this country and examine how pharmacist-management of drug therapy results in cost comparable or lower to those outside this country and how they improve therapeutic outcomes. Pharmacists in a variety of practice settings have been empowered to work with their healthcare colleagues through information and appropriate reimbursement incentives to control cost and improve the quality of care. Prescription medications have been used to successfully treat acute and chronic diseases, and although medication use has assumed a primary role in healthcare, its provision is often uncoordinated and highly fragmented. It has been estimated that over $30 billion could be saved annually by improving compliance and attention to medication-induced problems. Having spoken of quality and cost, I would like to close with comments on issues of access. Many Americans do not have healthcare insurance coverage for outpatient drugs. For some, this creates problems in receiving medications. A broader question of access should not be overlooked when one realizes that the equivalent of the entire population of the United States goes through a pharmacy every seven days. Those who would reform healthcare system must consider how best to utilize pharmacists as primary healthcare resources. I close with a restatement of our position that a pharmacy benefit, not a drug benefit, should be part of the core package. The profession of pharmacy has developed and evaluated services which contain drug costs at the international level or below, have increased access, and services that have improved quality. We are prepared, as a profession, to extend pharmaceutical care to all Americans if your efforts to reform the healthcare system result in the elimination of those barriers which restrict its provision today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll begin the questioning with Mrs. Rasko. Who's the daughter of pharmacist?
Yes, and my first local pharmacist in Little Rock is sitting here, another Arkansin, Dr. West. Let's talk a little bit about research and development, and I would ask if you feel it should continue to be built into the system subject to overall budget constraints, or should we look at it as a separate piece like we do graduate medical education? What would your thoughts be on the issue of research and development and budgeting?
Dr. Rab?
Well, I think that the research that is conducted in the United States stimulated by the National Institutes of Health, universities, academic research, Secretary Shalala mentioned University of California, San Francisco, where much of biotechnology began, and that together with private research is one of the most dynamic synergies that we have in this country. It's the envy of many foreign companies, particularly countries, particularly Japan, and they are very different. The research that's done, that's financed by the federal government through the National Institutes of Health or universities, is fundamental research. Biotechnology, the science behind it, couldn't have happened without that, but that doesn't translate it into products therein in bottles that help patients. I think one important thing to remember is that buildings, instruments, people don't solve and prevent diseases. Medicines do, and vaccines do. The people, the physicians, the nurses, the pharmacists, are essential in delivering those, but it's the science that begins with federal funding and ends with the companies that make products that advance healthcare in the way we have.
If I could just add to that, if you take some of the fundamental diseases that Kirk mentioned in his prepared statement, leaving aside AIDS, which is a rapidly growing problem financially, not only, and not otherwise, not to mention the other horrible features of it. If you take many cancers, much of cardiovascular disease, Alzheimer's, some of those diseases, they together cost the country about $400 billion a year, according to studies done by the groups that represent those patients. The total drug budget in the United States is a little bit over $50 billion. That budget is funding much of the research that goes into those diseases. If one of those diseases could be cured, or in the case of Alzheimer's, just delayed for a couple of years, you would save and affect the drug budget for all the other prescription drugs that are paid for in a year. So the research, both at NIH and in the private sector, is very important.
Mr. Allnut, let me ask you whether you have any problem if the government stopped reimbursing on a two-tier system for drug prices as Ms. Fenster recommended.
It seems to me that a separate way to look at that system is that if, our position has been for many years, if a physician feels the generic product is all right for the patient, if the pharmacist agrees with that and dispenses that product to the patient, that product ought to be reimbursed at the appropriate price for that product, and we have no objection to that. If, for some reason, the physician feels, and there are cases where the brand name is the one that the patient should get, then we think it should be reimbursed on that basis. There's a danger, particularly in maintenance drugs, of switching back and forth from a generic to a brand name, from a brand name to a generic, or even between generics, because they're not exactly alike in those diseases where it's careful, you have to have a patient carefully monitored. So you ought to stay on what you're on if it's working for you. Otherwise, substitution is not something we object to, and the reimbursement ought to be in accordance with the cost of the product.
Senator Benson?
You gave me a little on this example you gave us from Medicaid. It's a startling difference in numbers. And what I'm trying to figure out is that, are they chemically equivalent? Or are these two entirely different drugs?
They are not only chemically equivalent, they are therapeutically equivalent, which means they...
Excuse me. Could you repeat? I think you have to get right up to your mics.
They are not only chemically equivalent, they are therapeutically equivalent, which means they have been tested before approval by the FDA in humans to make sure that the brand and the generic work the same. The reason for these differences, Mr. Secretary, is that although there's a lot of talk that nobody likes price controls, in the United States right now, the most competitive industry, the generic industry, is subject to price controls. Those are upper-limit prices that have been set on the generic version of multi-source drugs by the Healthcare Financing Administration. There is no comparable limit on the brand-name versions of those products, and while it may be all right for a physician to decide that he wants his patient to have an $80 drug, as a taxpayer, I don't want to pay for the $80 drug.
That's a pretty dramatic example. Mr. Allnut, let me ask you, you're talking about companies prepared to show restraint in increasing their prices. Could you give me a feel for how long that would be? Are we talking about, are we also talking about all companies complying? Are we talking about products in the aggregate? Or are we talking about each product? Could you amplify that some for me?
Yes, I'd be glad to. I almost called you Mr. Chairman, Mr. Secretary. Companies have not set any time limit. What we've talked about is the transition period from now until managed competition was in place and functioning. As the panel well knows, once that system is in place, you can expect very strong price competition between providers who are trying to supply the accountable health partnerships, whatever they might be called. So we feel there'll be, the market itself would control the prices then, but we recognize as a problem both to patients and to the budget, most notably, during that transition period. It's one of the difficult problems that you're trying to deal with. So that period would need to be defined. We have not said it's a year or 18 months or any particular length of time. The companies that have already voluntarily taken the pledge, you might say, and have done so independently and have not done so on the same terms, there are now 11 companies that have pledged to hold their price increases to the CPI. Nearly half of the market is in that category. Some of them have taken it one year at a time. Some of them have defined it more generally as so long as the marketplace remains competitive and there are federal policies that allow us to continue in our current status. So that, I can't give you a hard definition of a length of time. I think that's exactly the kind of thing that we would like to talk to the administration about if you took the jaw-boning route of jaw-boning company by company, or that we would like to define for ourselves with clearance from the Justice Department if that is the route you prefer, and we talked to Mr. Magaziner a couple of weeks ago about that.
Mr. Rab, let me better understand. A situation where those that belong to your biotech association, when I look at the OECD numbers, the prices seem to be more constant across those countries in your products than seems to be the norm of other pharmaceutical products. Can you explain that to me?
Well, I think there is a number of factors. Our prices, our products are obviously newer and been on the market for a much shorter period of time, and they're products that are, in every case, virtually are dealing with very serious, previously unmet medical problems.
But I'd have thought you'd have more variances under those conditions. These other things, if they're older products, have had time to level the difference through competition, I would think.
Well, I mean, I think I can only speak functionally from my own company, Genentech. I can't speak how it's been done by the other companies, but I think that when we establish a price, we feel it is equitable to have the same price throughout the world. It's not always been the case. As it turns out, in Japan, the prices of biotechnology products are generally around three times more expensive, and as a matter of fact, many products are more expensive in Europe than the United States. But I have to add, since we're so young, often our products have been licensed to foreign companies so we could get revenues in our early days, and so they determine the price overseas if we're not doing it ourselves, and that's why maybe they're higher there. I don't know.
Mr. Secretary?
Yes?
If you look at, I think AKI, not the total answer, but AKI is the newness of the biotechnology products. If you look at non-biotechnology products, if I can use that term, in the last few years, you'll find very little price disparity in the industrialized world at the time of introduction of those products. That was not, did not used to be the case, but it's common there for them to be in a very narrow, fairly narrow band. Now, over time, you'll see them grow apart simply because of exchange rates, and we have some data that'll show you just what exchange rates alone would do to prices over a 10- or 15-year period, but at the time of introduction now, the prices are quite similar in the industrialized world.
Dr. Gans, let me ask you something. On your suggestion, it seems to me that you're recommending an expanded role for pharmacists. Now, could you elaborate on that? Are you calling for some possible national licensing of pharmacists as a way of expanding their scope of practice?
Secretary Benson, what we're suggesting is that the reason why prices are all over the board in America, and as Dr. West said, called them discriminatory prices, is that some pharmacists working closely with physicians in certain places have been able to significantly reduce the cost of drugs. They do this by what they call formulary systems, and they look at drugs within a group, and they decide which drug they're going to use, and then the companies become much more competitive with their prices. You're probably familiar with Congressman Waxman's comparison of Canadian prices versus U.S. But we also looked at those, had some of our members look at those that work in these systems, and in fact, their prices were at the Canadian level or below. And what you have to do is empower pharmacists to work with physicians to work to lower these prices, and all that we're suggesting is force the pharmaceutical industry to become more competitive, and we think that's the best way to get lower prices and allow greater access.
Well, you talk about having, being able to get more specific information on the patient...
Correct.
...to be able to accomplish some of this, and yet you get into a patient's privacy. That's something that we have to protect. Are there any kind of demonstration projects that are underway in this type of thing?
Yes, there are. There are several companies that now will send information... There are several companies that now will send information via computer to a practicing pharmacist and tell them when there's a drug interaction or where there's a problem. For example, if a patient had strep throat, there's no better drug for strep throat than penicillin. But many times physicians don't know that penicillin's still there, or they read about it, or a pharmaceutical representative has told them to use something else. So they write a prescription for something that's 10 times higher. Pharmacists, quite frankly, will get, the patient will get the same outcome if penicillin's used, but the pharmacist isn't incentivized in the system to do that. And most times, they don't have enough information. So if we can get the information to the pharmacist about the patient, he's a healthcare practitioner, he can hold the patient's confidentiality. Right now, we're required by federal law via Ober-Ninety to counsel all patients. And pharmacists are getting information on whether or not the patient has AIDS right from the patient themselves. It's an extra step. Why can't we get this from insurance companies who have this information? And then we can utilize it to take care of our patients. They're just as much our patient as they are the physicians.
Thank you.
Secretary Benson?
Yes.
If I could respond also to that, to a part of that, access to the pharmacist is critical when we're talking about controlling costs. Now, the pricing policies, the discriminatory pricing policies of the manufacturers, they limit access to the pharmacist by creating these faraway distributors of the product, where if the pharmacist is involved at the local level, in the community, then they're working with the physician, they can provide cost containment. And they can also provide, and do provide, many of the screenings and monitoring of the patient that is so helpful, and here again, helps contain costs in the overall process. If I could mention one study that was conducted at Purdue University, a study of 33,000 new prescriptions showed that pharmacist interventions with prescribing-related problems saved more than $76,000 in direct medical costs, or $123 per problematic prescription. So there is a preventive role for the pharmacist to play in healthcare delivery.
Thank you. Mr. Magaziner?
I'm interested if you could comment, sorry, I'm interested if any of you could comment on programs that might provide better integration of information among providers and pharmacists about different types of prescription drugs or generic drugs that particularly elderly people might be taking. I guess some of the studies that we've seen indicate that a significant percentage of admissions of elderly people to hospitals come from, or through emergency rooms, from pharmaceuticals that might have been prescribed by different physicians and which conflict with each other and cause problems. I'm wondering if you have any specific ideas for us on how we can try to deal with that kind of problem?
I could respond and say that I certainly agree with the people representing pharmacy here, that the pharmacist can play a key role in doing exactly that if the pharmacist has the information he or she needs. Many pharmacies today do maintain records that allow them, if the patient and doctors will tell them what the patient is taking. But it ultimately comes back to the responsibility of the patient to be sure that the physician and the pharmacist know what is being taken. We've tried on a trial basis through the National Council on the Aging to run what some people call brown bag programs-
Right.
...where people will come in with everything they're taking so that a record can be made. There are various kinds of little booklets, records someone can have. But if the patient, in an unmanaged competition world, goes to two or three different doctors and gets two or three different things, including over-the-counter products, it can be a real problem. I believe that's one of the real benefits that could come out of a more managed healthcare system with someone taking responsibility for the whole patient, because the problem you mentioned is a real one.
There are several systems that are evolving. Most of your large community hospitals are now developing and moving away from the hospital focus, and they've put pharmacists on teams, and they're now reaching out into the community. And for those patients, specifically the elderly, we've seen patterns where they may have a large hospital admission with a big bill for congestive heart failure, diabetes, or some sort of pulmonary disease. They're the three big ones. Then they have a series of small, quick hospitalizations, five or six over a year, one or two days. Usually that's to improve their therapy. We are looking at developing case management models where the information can be given to the pharmacist, and they can work with a nurse collaboratively to fine-tune, for lack of a better term, the elderly's therapy. We've seen the statistic that as high as 25% of our admissions to nursing homes are because people cannot manage their drug therapy at home. We believe that the pharmacist, coupled with a nurse and with a physician, can be a primary healthcare resource. They're the only ones, pharmacists are the only ones that haven't abandoned the inner city and haven't abandoned rural America. They're there. It's what they need is the information and some further modification of software. They are trained properly to do this. One of the keys, of course, is the second part of that, is some kind of change in the way they're reimbursed. But we believe the pharmacist can do that, and there's four or five studies now being conducted. There's one at Hedry Ford Hospital in their healthcare system where they've committed to, I think it's no further increase on a yearly basis in their capitated fee than 5%. They're putting pharmacists on the teams, they're working with community pharmacies so that they'll be the primary person along with a nurse to follow that patient. So it's really keys in on information primarily and the change in the reimbursement structure for pharmacy.
I'm sorry, yes?
Yeah, I'd like to make one sort of different comment for consideration. Many, many studies show that patients, and particularly elderly patients, take their medication by color, size, shape, and color. In other countries such as Canada, generic drugs are in the same or similar color, shape, and size as the branded product. In the United States, because of litigation and the Trademark Act and so forth, we are not allowed to be in a similar size, shape, and color. That could have a lot to do with confusion in the marketplace and one reason for these brown bag programs.
Can I ask one other, I'm sorry, you want to answer this one?
If I could go back to your, excuse me, if I could go back to your original question. I'm not familiar with any integrated systems today that would totally deliver the product on drug utilization review and so forth. However, there are, in subsequent to the adoption of the OBR requirements, there are systems all over the country that do provide the collection of the data that I think you're talking about. Now, there are some questions that need to be answered to assure confidentiality. That is a big question that we're concerned about. But there are nationwide systems, but they don't really, they're not integrated to the degree that you're asking. I think they could be.
Just one other question somewhat related. One of the things we found in looking at problems of elderly healthcare is that often doctors who don't focus necessarily on the elderly, that dosage levels might differ for an elderly person from somebody who's younger. And that usually there are not clear guidelines or suggested dosages as there might be for adults or children that might be pertinent for the elderly. And therefore, we found that there were often, you know, over-prescripted drugs because they were using guidelines that were more appropriate for younger people. I'm wondering why that is the case? Why aren't there specific studies done that would indicate more proper dosage levels for elderly people?
The elderly are very difficult to do studies on because when you do dosage studies, Mr. Magaziner, you usually try to do them on somebody that has one drug and one disease.
Yeah.
And we've just published a book on geriatric dosing, and I think it's the best thing that's out there. But it's still, we still have a ways to go. That's probably the major problem. Plus, most studies are done on young men and women, college students. And that's where most of the work is really done, and the rest of it's anecdotal. But there is a growing body of knowledge about using less drugs, fewer drugs, and lower dosages, and getting the same job done.
I would also add that we have seen that there is a more conservative nature often on the part of physicians relative to the elderly, and they're less willing, for many times legitimate reasons, to experiment. Even though there are certain times, for example, in cardiovascular disease, where they could benefit even more so, the concerns over the unknowns, whether it's other disease and so forth, inhibits experimentation.
25%, 25% of all hospital admissions among the elderly are due to drug non-compliance.
Right.
And we're really concerned about it. And here I go back to the access question. So many of the determinations, the observations that are made by the pharmacist. So if the pharmacist is not involved in that process, they do not see or cannot talk to the caregiver or the patient to know really that this is the wrong dose of the medication. So it is a problem. Again, access is critical.
Thank you.
Senator?
Well, I'd like to ask another question, Mr. Allent. You're opposed to price controls. What about negotiated prices with a HIPAA or a national board? How would you stand on that?
We would believe it's much better to, and that you'll find a much more economical system if the market, once the system is in place, if the market's allowed to function. I think you'll find ferocious price competition in an area where 10 or 15 years ago, there was very little. Today, there's quite a bit because of the growing volume of care provided by HMOs. And that rather than to either restrict drugs or restrict pricing at a national level or a statewide level, it'd be much better to have it go through the individual institutions. I think you'd find the result you want, and probably more than you'd get with national regulation.
Why should we have confidence in that if we see what the market does now in terms of drug pricing in this country?
Well, I think that what you have seen in the past was a system where many have pointed out, in much of medical care generally, there was little in the way of true competition as we know it in other fields. But today, in those areas where we are, through institutions like HMOs competing to be in their system, we find a lot more price restraint. That's a good part of the reason that you see price increases in the pharmaceutical industry much lower now than they were just two or three years ago. We're down now to the lowest price increases in the last 15 years, this past 12 months. And that is, a good part of that is because of increasing competition. When new products are being introduced, they're now coming in where they're in the same therapeutic field as other products are already, leading products are there, they're coming in well below. In the last two years, the data I have says that the typical new product came in at 18% below the market leader in that class. That's a different world than we were in 10 years ago.
I might add that I think we see some models that work. For an example, hospitals. Hospitals are much more aggressive and competitive in dealing, in this hospital pharmacy where that leadership generally comes, in dealing with buying of drugs in general. And that includes drugs from biotechnology. I think we see, I live and experienced in California with Kaiser Permanente, a leadership, and by the way, it's, the physicians and the administration in pharmacy work very cooperatively there, where there's, I don't always like their effectiveness, but they are very successful in using the managed competition system in purchasing drugs. And yet, none of that inhibits the kind of progress and technology advancements that come from examples such as biotechnology that some sort of centralized system has the exposure of doing. I would point out, there are virtually no biotechnology companies outside of the United States. There are handfuls here and there. But this is an American industry, and the president and vice president, when they're in California on the technology initiative, acknowledged that, and I thought that was very worthwhile and important. You might be interested in example of something we're working on for breast cancer. Some years ago, we identified a protein that is expressed in large quantities when women have breast or ovarian cancers, called HER2. And for a long time, we studied this and found that if you, if a woman expresses X quantity, her lifespan is about 2,000 days. If she expresses 2X quantity, her lifespan is about 1,000 days. If she expresses 3X or more, it's 200 or 300 days. And we went right to work in developing something called a monoclonal antibody to attack that protein. And we're about to begin phase II clinical trials on that. Knock on wood, we should do a lot of it in my business. If this works, it'll be revolutionized. This is the kind of high risk that we do in our business and offer such fundamental hope for such serious diseases that we suffer in our society.
Secretary Shalela, if I could add to that and go back to your question for just a moment, we honestly believe that government price controls would affect research profoundly. We may be wrong, but it's an honest belief on our part. We also believe that managed competition will work. If you trust us, and you're wrong, you can move quickly to change that. If you don't trust us and put in price controls to start with, you will have already done the damage that you can perhaps undo it later. France is trying to undo damage now. Canada just moved a few weeks ago to do that. You can always reverse course in your case. I would say, try it. Give it a try. If it doesn't work, let us have it.
The idea of HHS reversing course is a little overwhelming to me, frankly.
If I could just comment one more bit on the drug prices. There's only two people on this panel that know what drugs cost, and that's the two pharmacists. And yet, they are locked out of the system, except in hospitals, HMOs, where you've heard, where pharmacists team with physicians. Whatever you do, make the rules the same, all right? Empower the pharmacists. Let me give you an example. Did you ever hear the little words DW, dispense as written, D-A-W? Means the physician is telling the pharmacist that he cannot use a generic, all right? I saw a prescription that was for a brand-name product, that the only manufacturer of the generic product was a subsidiary of the company that made the branded product. The physician didn't know. I'm not claiming the physician should know. They don't know. And one of the problems that we have discriminatory pricing, as Dr. West has said, is that physicians don't know, they don't have an economic stake in it, and they want the best for their patients. And the best in America is always the newest. I had a pharmacist tell me that, wouldn't it be nice if a physician would write for you for a brand-new Mercedes? I can't afford a new Mercedes, all right? And I think it's time that we empowered pharmacists equally, set the rules equally, and these companies, as Kirk Rabb has said, will compete. The PMA companies compete. It's America. But don't allow the rules to be set for one group of drug purchasers one way and one group of another. That ends up with discrimination, and the little old lady in Kansas who's 80 years old is paying $130 for the same product that your staff members are paying $32 for. It's not fair. So set the rules up the same and put pharmacists in the center of it, just like they have in other settings. And I think you'll have competition. I think it'll be fair. Nobody will be holding a gun at anybody's head. And I think you will see prices come down, and I think they will be lower than what you see in international areas, because we've already seen it in different subsects of American drug purchasing. Right here, we have lower prices in hospitals and HMO than what they pay in Canada.
Mr. Secretary?
Well, I wouldn't worry too much about that Mercedes. There's some awful good American cars these days. But let me say to you, Mr. Allent, you're talking about antitrust provisions. What specifically exactly are you talking about in the way of problems in that regard?
What we have, what we have been advised repeatedly of, and we have had antitrust council present in our board meetings for the last couple of years, first when we were considering a bill that you had in last year and seeing what provisions we could endorse in that, we've been advised that under the Sherman Act, and I'm not an antitrust lawyer, so I may need to correct this record, but under the Sherman Act, for us to discuss price restraint seems counterintuitive, but even to talk about limiting price increases could be a per se violation of the law. So we have not had discussions among companies about that. The companies did, our board did, vote unanimously in December to authorize us to urge the new administration to jawbone us. Now, that's an indication that they felt willing to be jawboned, but we- Now, that's an indication that they felt willing to be jawbone, but we could not say, well, how will you respond? You asked me earlier, and I failed to respond to your question. Would every company do, would every company respond? I believe the answer is yes, but I can't ask them if they would. There is a Norpe- Pennington doctrine under the antitrust laws that allows us to respond to governmental action in ways that we could not act on our own, in cases where we could not act on our own. And that's what we've been trying to do. The alternative, as we discussed with Mr. Magaziner, is clearance for the limited purpose under the antitrust laws from the Justice Department, to talk among ourselves and agree on a specific plan. We would want a plan to be auditable, checkable by the General Accounting Office, and enforceable if we had such a plan. But we need clearance to go beyond what I've just said. I hope I've not gone beyond what I should say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your participation, for the interaction. I'd also want to urge you, if you want to communicate with us with additional information, to submit it in writing, and we'd be happy to have it. And again, thank you for joining us today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I believe that takes care of what I hired out for.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Are those your glasses?
Yeah.
Do you want to take a look?
Yeah, I'm all right, thanks.
You're straight back there, too.
Snickers.
Could you call Jerry and give him, yeah, Jerry, give him those glasses?
Do you want it for anything else?
Yeah, I'm all right, I love the Snickers.
Is the Vice President coming back?
Yes.
We're gonna wait a couple of minutes for the Vice President to come back.
John Wall?
Yeah, it's on.
Yeah.
Are those your glasses?
Yeah.
Do you want to take a look?
Yeah, I'm all right, thanks.
You're straight back there, too.
Snickers.
Could you call Jerry and give him, yeah, Jerry, give him those glasses?
Do you want it for anything else?
Yeah, I'm all right, I love the Snickers.
Is the Vice President coming back?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Down a little, give you a little more space.
I'm fine.
Okay.
Carol coming back?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Should go ahead?
Yes.
All right. We'll start this next panel now, Panel Eight, and we're going to deal with representatives expressing the point of view of hospitals in America. We're going to ask you to address the following question. Why do some hospitals charge $5 for an aspirin and $35 for a towel? And what can we do about this problem? Our witnesses in this, or the presenters in this panel include Dick Davidson, President of the American Hospital Association; Michael Bromberg, Executive Director of the Federation of American Health Systems; Jerry Deigman, Executive Vice President of the American Protestant Health Association; Sister Bernice Coriel, Senior Vice President of the Catholic Health Association; and Lawrence McAndrews, President of the National Association of Children's Hospitals. We're delighted that all of you could join us today. And Mr. Davidson, could you lead off? Welcome. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. My name is Dick Davidson. I'm the President of the American Hospital Association. It's an alliance of more than 5,000 healthcare institutions across America, and we commend you for your endurance, and I know that you're partway through this. We're delighted to be here to talk to the issue that you've raised in terms of the cost of an aspirin. However, if we spend all of our time focusing on that specific detail, I'm not sure that we gain a lot in terms of our determination of how to fix the problem, except it's a serious problem and it needs fixing.
We do want to find out about that aspirin, though.
We will get to that, and I know that there are other panelists who have a lot of detailed response to that, and we have that for you in writing. I think the way to look at it first is that we need to have true reformation, the way health services are delivered in this country and the way they're paid for. And that gets to the aspirin question, which has to do with our payment system. We've developed a system that makes no sense, that penalizes people who pay their own bills, and we need to develop a system that has equity in it. And in that sense, we've got to start with the first premise, and that is that we must move to universal access for all Americans. Without that, you don't get true reform in the system and to develop a level playing field and fairness and equity in the treatment of all citizens of the United States, as well as the providers who take care of people in their communities. We think we need to reinvent the way we deliver care, and we need to reinvent the way we pay for care, and that is a complete transformation from what it is that we have today. If you look at the current healthcare delivery system, that's an oxymoron. We really don't have a system. The way healthcare is organized in this country is fragmented. It's not connected. One piece doesn't fit with another. When people come to healthcare institutions, we provide excellent institutional care, but they aren't necessarily connected to a continuum of care. And we think that most Americans end up having to fend for themselves in the absence of a coordinated care system. We pay for care in a rather bizarre way in this country. We pay for care on the basis of every medical encounter. In other words, the only time a provider gets paid is if there's a medical encounter. And I think you can imagine what kinds of incentives that creates. In order to have more revenue flow through the system, you have to have more medical encounters. And what that does is to foster competition in the system, among and between hospitals and doctors, ultimately to treat more patients. It drives the whole competitive spirit toward capturing market share, and ultimately has the potential perverse incentive of wanting to order more tests and consume more units of service. We think we've got to scrap that system, and the sooner, the better. The system is broken, and we've got to come up with a new one. Secondly, we don't think that we should expand access into this delivery system because we'll be terribly frustrated because of the absence of coordination. We can give all Americans a health security card in terms of insurance, but that doesn't necessarily provide access. That health insurance card doesn't get you access in the Mississippi Delta. It may not get you access in parts of Montana, Wyoming, or any other place. And that means that we've got to move to the development, not only of providing people health security, but a health delivery system that has them have a place to go. And that doesn't exist in all parts of the United States today. And we believe that we've got to start with local units, starting in every community across the United States, community by community. People get sick one at a time in their community, and they generally turn to their doctor, and they turn to their hospital for care. And so we've got to rebuild the delivery system in the United States from the local basis up. We're calling for the creation of something called community care networks, which in essence creates a collaborative arrangement focusing not on competition but collaboration in communities, bringing doctors and hospitals together with other providers in the community, long-term care institutions, chronic care institutions, public health agencies, the public school system, local government insurers, employers, to begin to put together a delivery system that has a point of entry in each community. And we move people through a seamless system of care with somebody in charge of their care, quarterbacking and moving them from one place to another. We think that's the essential way to go. And the goal should be improving health status in communities and focusing on prevention and focusing on wellness. Our system today focuses on sickness and illness, and we need to change that. In doing this, we need to change the way we pay for care. We think we need to move to a fixed annual payment system with these community care networks. We call it capitation, a fixed amount of money to pay for a defined set of benefits to a defined population in a community. And we think that will provide a whole lot of new incentives for the health delivery system. It will immediately bring economic discipline to the system when you move away from fee for service, every medical encounter arrangement, and taking care of people. We will then begin together to seek the least expensive form of care. We'll foster outreach for prevention because it's essential to have prevention. This will help to change the medical arms race as a result of the competitive environment that we have today. And we ought to be focusing on health status in communities and medical outcomes. This will solve the aspirin problem, be certain, because we won't be looking at every individual unit of cost. We'll be looking at something broader with a new set of incentives. And we don't think that any of this works, however, unless there's universal access. And the hospitals of America are prepared to move very quickly to this new kind of a system, and we join with you to make this happen in as soon as possible.
Thank you very much. Our second presenter will be Michael Bromberg, Executive Director of the Federation of American Health Systems. Welcome, Mike. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. It's a pleasure to be here representing investor-owned hospitals. We share your goal to find a way to assure access to affordable care for every American and want to pledge our cooperation in working with you toward that end. And I will try to take a stab at the question about the $5 aspirin. It's been asked many times over the last 50 years since this debate began. First, it's fairly obvious that an aspirin doesn't cost anywhere near $5. In fact, an aspirin bought on the way home from the hospital, at the hospital pharmacy, probably costs about a nickel, just the same as in a drugstore. But when that aspirin is prescribed by a physician for use in a hospital bed, that charge must cover overhead and other things. Let's sort of think of it this way. If President Clinton tomorrow decided to jog over to McDonald's and have a $1.99 Big Mac, the ingredients of which you could probably buy for 10 cents in a supermarket, you'd have to ask the question, what does that $1.99 cover? Well, it covers the salaries of McDonald's workers, it covers rent, utilities, insurance, equipment, et cetera. But what if a McDonald's employee delivered that Big Mac to the White House? It might cost a little extra, maybe another 50 cents or a dollar. And what if a nurse who makes three or four times the salary of a McDonald's worker and a nurse who has health insurance paid for by the hospital, which many McDonald's employees do not have, delivered that aspirin instead? That might add another dollar or two. And what if McDonald's gave 5% of its hamburgers away for nothing to poor people? Or what if it gave 45% of its hamburgers away to government beneficiaries at a huge discount? Then that Big Mac might cost another 50 cents or a dollar. Now, I suppose if the nation's hospitals were more conscious of public relations, they would have broken down their bills over the years and just said an aspirin cost a nickel or a dime or a quarter, plus overhead, plus labor, plus cross subsidies for other people. But we haven't done that. On the other hand, there's pretty good proof that hospitals also haven't been ripping anyone off. Because you have to look at the bottom line on a hospital stay, which may cost $3,000 or $4,000, and ask yourself what the margin is. The most recent data for all hospitals in the country is that the average margin for hospitals on patient revenue is one-half of 1%, and on total revenues is 5% approximately. Now, if government price controls, for example, were to drive those margins lower, we're concerned that quality would suffer. The aspirin is clearly not the product, Mr. Vice President, and government micromanagement of charges is also clearly not the answer. We must move to a system which has strong incentives to reduce unnecessary treatment, encourages preventive care, fosters integrated delivery and financing systems which compete on quality and price, a single price per capita for total care. Price controls instead freeze in place inequities and prop up inefficient providers. And I certainly recommend for your attention the op-ed piece in today's Wall Street Journal by C. Jackson Grayson, who was head of the Price Commission in the '70s. The arguments are all there. I won't, I won't go over them. Let me conclude by saying that I hope that you will not underestimate our willingness to help you enact real change. We want it too. Bashing providers over $5 aspirin, I know, makes good theater and effective politics, but it would be a mistake to jump from that to a conclusion that price controls would address the problem. That would merely increase other costs and drive down quality. What we must do, as Mr. Davidson said, is restructure our system, revise the incentives so that we can get effective, affordable, appropriate health care to all Americans. There are many ways to do that and control costs. We need to federalize the Medicaid program and buy people coverage instead of dumping them in welfare programs. We need to accelerate outcomes research and treatment protocols so we stop unnecessary care. We need malpractice reform. We need a standard benefit package. We need means-tested subsidies so that people who can't afford it can get care, and a host of other ways to control costs. And we pledge our cooperation in helping you do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for addressing the question. Our next presenter is Jerry Deigman, Executive Vice President of the American Protestant Health Association. Welcome. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. For over 70 years, the American Protestant Health Association has represented Adventists, Baptists, Lutherans, Methodists, and some Presbyterians, healthcare institutions throughout the United States. Institutions motivated, at least historically, by a mission for healing and wholeness. To the extent that church-related institutions became slaves to or victims of the reimbursement competitive mind of the '70s and '80s, we must honestly seek our communities and constituents' forgiveness, followed by changed behavior, motivated and supported by the very policy reforms you are studying and will propose. With those reform incentives, which we certainly pray are built around that capitated system that has been mentioned before, and for defined population groups, those exorbitant, embarrassing, unexplainable, although well by Mike, line item charges will go away. As surely as our corporate behavior must change, so must that of the consumer or the individual. When 25% or $200 billion-plus dollars is spent on the treatment of disease resulting from lifestyle behavior or misbehavior, significant strategy must be developed to change those individual behaviors. Community care and integrated delivery networks must include our places of worship, church, parish, synagogue; our places of employment, schools, daycare, and senior centers. Effective programs that prevent disease and promote healthy lifestyles must share in the capitated fee, keeping a population healthy. If 25% of that health care expense could be medicated or devised, massive research would begin. It's harder than that, you know that. It's personal, it's behavioral, it's life. And therefore, the church and its related institutions must... That would merely increase other costs and drive down quality. What we must do, as Mr. Davidson said, is restructure our system, revise the incentives so that we can get effective, affordable, appropriate health care to all Americans. There are many ways to do that and control costs. We need to federalize the Medicaid program and buy people coverage instead of dumping them in welfare programs. We need to accelerate outcomes research and treatment protocols so we stop unnecessary care. We need malpractice reform. We need a standard benefit package. We need means-tested subsidies so that people who can’t afford it can get care, and a host of other ways to control costs. And we pledge our cooperation in helping you do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for addressing the question. Our next presenter is Jerry Deigman, Executive Vice President of the American Protestant Health Association. Welcome. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. For over 70 years, the American Protestant Health Association has represented Adventists, Baptists, Lutherans, Methodists, and some Presbyterians, health care institutions throughout the United States, institutions motivated, at least historically, by a mission for healing and wholeness. To the extent that church-related institutions became slaves to or victims of the reimbursement competitive mind of the ’70s and ’80s, we must honestly seek our communities and constituents’ forgiveness, followed by changed behavior motivated and supported by the very policy reforms you are studying and will propose. With those reform incentives, which we certainly pray are built around that capitated system that has been mentioned before and for defined population groups, those exorbitant, embarrassing, unexplainable, although, well, by Mike, line item charges will go away. As surely as our corporate behavior must change, so must that of the consumer or the individual. When 25% or $200 billion-plus dollars is spent on the treatment of disease resulting from lifestyle behavior or misbehavior, significant strategy must be developed to change those individual behaviors. Community care and integrated delivery networks must include our places of worship, church, parish, synagogue; our places of employment, schools, daycare, and senior centers. Effective programs that prevent disease and promote healthy lifestyles must share in the capitated fee keeping a population healthy. If 25% of that health care expense could be medicated or devised, massive research would begin. It’s harder than that, you know that. It’s personal, it’s behavioral, it’s life. And therefore, the church and its related institutions must assume a major responsibility with you in this reform effort. One of the seven basic elements or belief statements, Tolgate, if you will, which was essential to us, is essential to a health system reform, states, “Community-based servant leadership is essential to make health care services both universal and affordable.” Competitive corporate model has not produced broad coverage or lower costs. Concern, collaboration, and compassion in covenant with our communities might. We urge the task force to continue its systemic health reform focus and not become the Clinton Cost Containment Cutting Commission. Devise a system that eliminates the need for billing for every aspirin and instead establish a reimbursement system even on a temporary or during a transition period based on a capitation arrangement. God bless.
Thank you very much. Sister Bernice Coriel is Senior Vice President of the Catholic Health Association. Sister, welcome. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I also chair the CHA’s Task Force, Leadership Task Force, on Health Care Policy Reform. And so I thank you for this invitation. The reason for the $5 aspirin is very simple. The American health care system is broken. It is built on an irrational mix of skewed financial incentives, escalating costs, cost-shifting, and inadequate access, all of which contribute to the $5 aspirin. What can be done? In our view, the answer is to enact a fundamental systemic health care reform. The Catholic Health Association has developed a person-centered approach to reform that would accomplish the following. First, it would provide continuous, uniform coverage for all persons living in the United States. Our proposal calls for a standard comprehensive benefit package that is acceptable to the broad American public. We urge the task force to avoid a basic package that becomes a floor for the middle class and a ceiling for the poor. Second, our plan encourages doctors, hospitals, and other providers of care to collaborate with one another. This will enable the delivery of health care services to be better coordinated, much less costly, and much more responsive to the needs of patients, their families, and their communities. At the heart of our plan is what we call the Integrated Delivery Network. It is a set of providers organized to render a coordinated, comprehensive continuum of health care services, including long-term care. The networks receive risk-adjusted capitated payments and are held accountable for improving or maintaining the health status of their enrolled population. Individuals choose among competing networks based on quality and service, but not on price. Finally, our reform proposal calls for a national global budget administered through capitated payments. We believe that both components are necessary. A global budget allows the nation to make an explicit decision about the resources we devote to health care compared to other social needs. Capitation is the best way to ensure true cost control under a global budget. Capitation realigns financial incentives and encourages providers to emphasize primary and preventive care and a more rational use of technology and reduced unnecessary care. I must emphasize that rate-setting alone does none of these things. While rate-setting may be needed as an interim cost-control strategy, if it becomes permanent, our nation will miss a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to address the underlying causes of health care inflation, not just treat the symptoms. The Catholic Health Association began its deliberation on health care reform by enunciating what values should guide reform. These values, which are discussed in our longest statement, led us to a proposal that would improve the effectiveness of health care for people. As a result, we also designed a system with accountability for cost. We can force the aspirin down to 5 cents a tablet, but if that’s all we do, reduce costs without delivery reform, we will have failed our fellow citizens. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you very much. Our final presenter on this panel is Lawrence A. McAndrews, President of the National Association of Children’s Hospitals. Welcome. We’re eager to hear from you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. It’s a pleasure to be here. I did bring for you a $5 aspirin or what one might look like. And this really symbolizes more than a $5 aspirin. It symbolizes our national health insurance plan of the last 25 years. And in a simplistic way, it really calls attention to what we need to fix. We need to change this. The American public certainly sees the hospital charging an aspirin as absurd, $5, but it’s the result of a perverse reimbursement structure in which hospitals operate. Larger questions are why cost shifting? Why 35 million uninsured? Why Medicaid and Medicare underpaid? Cold, hard cash is a demanding taskmaster. When hospitals provide services to the uninsured or the underinsured, these costs must be borne, and they end up being borne by what appears to be a crazy charging system. To control health care costs, reimbursement structure and incentive system must be changed. Universal access is absolutely necessary for fixing the problem long term. Collaboration is an important part of the solution at the community level in order to avoid duplication of services and inane destructive competition. Giving people a stake financially and a choice of their physician and hospital is an extremely important part in making the individual responsible. Ultimately, hospitals and other providers must deliver cost-effective care. For example, hospitals have led the way in delivery care in ambulatory clinics, home care, parental training, and prevention. The crazy system we now have in insuring individuals must be changed to provide people with adequate security and appropriate access to health care services. Today, if you lose your job or you become seriously ill, you may lose your insurance. We support uniform benefits, employer mandates, tax incentives, public subsidies, and cost-sharing for insurance coverage and community rating. We believe on the way to reform, because children have different health care needs, uniform benefits for children should be designed for children. Because children have different health care service delivery needs, managed competition should be regulated to guarantee availability of pediatric-trained care and to avoid duplication of essential regionalized professional services for children. Because the resource requirements for children health care are different, inpatient cost-containment policies should recognize the different financial requirements of delivering care to children. And because Medicaid is now the health care safety net for millions of children, policies recognizing hospitals that serve a disproportionate share of low-income patients should be sustained in the transition to reform. Children are the future of our country, and their needs are different. It’s extremely important to keep in mind that one size does not fit all. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, all of you. And I’d like to note before going to the questions that at the beginning of this panel, we were joined by the Secretary for Veterans Affairs, Jesse Brown. Delighted to have you with us, Mr. Secretary. Let me kick it off by asking you, how would you suggest that we determine which facilities should provide which types of care under a new system?
We don’t think that the government should be in the business of deciding which facilities provide which kinds of care.
So leave that up to...
The notions that we’re talking about here is that we need to start, community by community, ultimately building a community-based system in collaboration with one another so that we ultimately determine, having the community have ownership of this delivery system, what the appropriate mix is, including the appropriate capacity. One of the questions is, how do we ultimately determine what hospitals should continue to exist? We’ve never found government at the state or national level ever able to come to grips with that. That should be a local prerogative, and the notions that we’ve been talking about, and I think you’ve heard them pretty consistently here, is that we need to begin, community by community, and let communities work that out.
Okay. How should communities decide which hospitals should provide which type of care?
Well, if you bring people together in terms of developing a community care network where all of the vested interests sit at the table, you’re ultimately going to sort through those kinds of questions...
Are there any guidelines you would suggest at all?
I think you’d have to have guidelines in terms of the oversight...
What kinds?
The oversight of what a community care network ought to look like, and then just have some kind of adequate due process in communities in making those decisions.
Are there any kind of guidelines you could suggest with respect to which kinds of hospitals should provide which kinds of care? If you had community after community after community looking at similar questions, are there any guidelines that you could suggest?
Well, certainly, you’re going to have to have access to tertiary care. So you have one kind of component. You’re going to have to have some determination...
Would you think university hospitals would be...
Yes, certainly, university hospitals may be ones that...
So you think it’s a general guideline, university hospitals would be more...
Not necessarily. In other words, there are alternative settings that provide tertiary care today. If you look at the sophistication of institutions around the country, I think that university institutions will be looking at their own futures in collaboration with communities. We may see them downsizing in some capacity. That takes you to the whole question of medical education and how you allocate for all of that. Seems to me you have to have a mix of players that are providing all of the essential services from prevention through acute care to long-term care and chronic care and make some determination of that mix.
Mr. Bromberg.
Mr. Vice President, I really think you’ve just put your finger on the ultimate question in this debate. There are a lot of complex issues in this debate, but the ultimate issue, I really believe, is who is going to control 1/7 of this economy, the government or the people? And the question you just asked is a perfect one to start with, because we tried it once before in the 1970s with something called Health Planning, a federal law, which tried to set up agencies all over the country to make decisions just like those. And we found out that what happened was that people spent a lot of money on attorneys and consultants, and eventually they got their, quote, “certificates of need.” They probably got them a year or two years later after spending an awful lot of money, a lot of which I think was wasted. What we really need to do, I hope, is that if we’re going to restructure 1/7 of the economy, which is a very big task, we’re going to put power in the hands of people. That means giving them choices. It doesn’t mean that government sitting in Washington or even a state capital should tell them which hospitals are good and which are bad, that which should stay and which shouldn’t. What they should do is what they do in every other basic essential of life, food, housing, and everything else. The government should guarantee safety and availability and financial stability. The government should make sure that insurance plans bought by people don’t go bankrupt in the middle of the year, leaving them helpless, as has happened in California. The government should make sure that the quality care which is delivered is measurable so that people can compare apples against apples and make choices. And most important, the government should make sure there are choices. The worst thing that could happen to our health system is for there to be only one or two of these networks, because the government rules were written so restrictively that consumers didn’t have a choice. I would hope that the ideal case is that a consumer goes to a... Once a year, goes to a broker or a health care purchasing co-op, whatever you want to call it, and has a choice of five, four, five, six insurance plans, and knows that one plan may have one hospital in it, one may have another hospital in it, and which doctors are in each plan, and the consumer makes that choice. The worst thing that could happen would be for us to entrust all of that to government. It’s too sensitive and too difficult, but I think it is the ultimate question of power.
Sister Coriel.
I don’t think the government should make that decision either, Mr. Vice President, but I think it’s very important that we let the people tell us what their needs are rather than we telling them what their needs are, which we have been doing for a long time. And I think if we did a needs assessment of what people actually saw as their necessities of life, we could get together and determine how many facilities are needed to do that, what kinds of facilities. I think that’s a local or a state determination. I don’t see that at a governmental, federal level. I would think it would be a wrong determination.
Mr. McAndrews.
I think there are two points I’d like to bring out. First of all, I think reasonably people could agree that there are resources within a community that ought to be regionalized and ought to be available to a population. And you could argue about where those begin and end, but there are regional resources that need to be rationalized within a system.
Well, who makes that decision?
The second point I’d like to bring up...
Hold on a second.
Coming right to it.
Okay.
The second point I would like to make is that there is an extraordinary resource across this country, and it’s called volunteers in communities across the country who are already actively involved at many hospitals of this country. And brought together in an effective way, these volunteers and trustees, who are not financially gaining from the system but are fiduciarily responsible for the system, could work in their local communities and bring rationalization to the community.
Yes. Go ahead. I didn’t quite get who makes that decision that a particular...
The volunteers, community members in the community, the volunteers, the trustees of this country that are involved in the delivery of health care across the country. They’re well-educated, they’re well-informed, they’re part of the community, they’re able to do this.
What if another hospital doesn’t agree? I mean, what if... If, I mean, making a hospital a regional facility implies that the other hospitals in that region are going to defer to that hospital playing a particular role? How’s that going to work out if it’s just, I mean, the volunteers supporting one hospital are not going to make that decision?
Well, you can’t have the volunteers from just one hospital. You have to have volunteers from the whole community that take a look at the needs that have been outlined in that community and then respond to those needs from not a single hospital point of view, but from a community point of view.
I believe that the discussion and dialogue that has been initiated by the task force around the country through its various ways and through its work groups has to take place even at the local level. Maybe not in 13-hour marathon sessions, but the very dialogue that you are having does need to take place there. And institutions, while it may be a little bit tough and it may require some process, do respond to community need and community desires. And after all, that’s where it ought to be and not at the federal level.
All right.
I sense that all of you have set a different tone. You’re talking about a much more collaborative model as opposed to a hard competition model. Is that true? Am I hearing that? A kind of bottoms-up community planning model in which you’d work together with the various health care delivery systems in your community to design something?
That’s generally the theme that all of us have included. Obviously, in large communities, you’re going to have many groupings of providers in these networks with some overlap, and you’ll see competition among those particular networks, as Mr. Bromberg was describing. So there’re going to be multiple forces in different communities. In smaller communities, you’re likely to have one network bringing all of the pieces together. But the theme, again, is the focus on collaboration, not the competition. We’ve been through that whole era. All of the incentives had us competing with each other for market share, for more patients, driving up volumes, and we’re saying that we need to reverse those incentives. The competition in the future will be among and between competing health plans, which will be integrated financing and delivery systems. And they’ll vary all across this country, community by community.
Let me just add to that, Madam Secretary. I’m a little uneasy with this collaboration notion. I agree with Dick on most of these issues, but I just want a few caveats I’d like to make for the record. I think what we’re looking for is less competition in an arms race for medical equipment and more competition on price, and less competition at the hospital level and more competition at the insurance plan level. So I really, collaboration, I think what Dick is talking about is hospitals working together, and I’ll get to that in a minute. But I think competition is still a very good word to use, because I think what you really want to foster here is competitive bidding. That’s the way you drive down prices, that’s the way you control costs. You want to restructure this system so that insurance plans are in a competitive bidding process across the table from a purchasing co-op or whoever else is across the table. That’ll drive prices down, and that’s competition in the best sense of the word. Now, competition in the hospital field has been, I agree with Dick, misused to some extent. But I think it’s a little bit wishful thinking to think that hospitals are all going to get together and give up this and give up that. Nor do I think it’s necessarily always a good idea. I was very pleased to see the Attorney General here briefly this morning. I really think the Justice Department has a role to play in health care, that if we don’t want this to become a utility, we must rely on the antitrust laws to have some enforcement. That’s not to say we shouldn’t ease them so we can get together and share an MRI, a million-dollar machine. But perhaps we don’t want us to go so far as to have hospitals ganging up to do boycotts and restraints of trade and creating monopolies so that, getting back to my other point earlier, consumers don’t have a choice.
So you didn’t fully mean it when you said government ought to stay completely out of it?
Oh, no. I think government has a major role to play, as I said before, on safety, financial solvency, antitrust. I mean, I’m not filese fair. The system needs regulation. The one area I am concerned about is that the government should not become a... The one area I am concerned about is that the government should not become a massive rate regulator and planner and try to take over one-seventh of the economy and control it. That would be the worst of the Canadian system without the best parts of it. Every, government has a major role to play in this area. We need you. We need government to change this system, reverse the incentives 180 degrees. In fact, if we're in trouble, the major reason we're in trouble today is because government 30 or 40 years ago said healthcare is free. It's tax subsidized. It doesn't matter how much we spend, companies can write it off, and people don't have to declare it as income. I would urge you to reverse that government ruling 180 degrees and step aside and watch the market get tough and prices come down. So we need government help.
Mr. Vice President, I would hope we could move away from this price-competitive model. I think healthcare is a social good. It's a service to people. We need to get back to the roots of what healthcare has always been, responding to needs. One of the things the CHA proposal has in its orientation, as you know, if you had an opportunity to read our document, is that we would see that the integrated delivery systems would enroll a population and guarantee that population a continuum of care. The collaboration would come between the continuum of care, between long-term care, primary care, acute care, physician care, transportation, assisted care. We need to move away from an acute illness model to a wellness model. It is too costly. We cannot afford to keep on doing the things we are doing the way we are doing it. And I would hope that we would allow the experimentation at state levels to do some of these things with a capitated rate, which then makes everyone caught blind to whether the person is rich or poor, black or white or Indian or Hispanic, and that they will get the care they need based on the care they need in the proper setting at a reasonable price that we believe will save money.
Mr. Magaziner?
Just to try to understand the common ground, which I thought I heard, and I want to be sure I heard it correctly. I heard all of you say that in terms of the way in which costs would ultimately come down or the rate of growth of costs would come down in the system is partly through better cooperation and collaboration that would naturally take place as networks form, but also by some form of per-person overall payment. And you seem to think that, and then let the local network manage the use of that payment to the best benefit of the consumer, the patient. And then you give the patient a choice that if they didn't like a given network's way of doing that, they could go to a different one that might exist if they were in an area that could support more than one. What you did not like, as I understood all of you, was when the government got in to regulate rates and prices in a micromanaged way. Is that a correct place of consensus? So you're not against the notion of there being some restraint on overall spending, per se? That's not quite the right word, but some budgeted notion per person?
When we talk about capitated payment...
Yeah.
...entering into agreements with the government, certainly that's a fixed level of payment for a defined set of services over a period of time.
But the difference, if I take a shade of difference between perhaps Mr. Bromberg and the sister and so on, it might be that you would see that, yes, you would say a capitated system is okay, but you would like a competitive mechanism that in some way was setting that...
Sure.
...as opposed to the government. But nevertheless, the notion that there should be a payment per person is common to all of you there.
Mr. Magaziner, I think that, just to clarify, we are pro-capitation and competitive bidding by networks over capitated rates. And we are even pro-negotiating with or having the government set that for government programs. Where I would express grave concern is if the government set a capitated rate for all Americans. And the reason for that ranges from our experience with the Medicaid program and other areas where we were afraid that the government, which has such a huge budget deficit, might be budget-driven rather than quality-driven, underfinanced the program, and have second-class quality in that program. That's our big fear. And secondly, to the extent that we're talking about using that capitation as a global budget of some kind, I think that should be done through the tax code subsidy instead. Because if the government gets into the area of putting a cap on health spending, it has an obligation and a responsibility, I think, first, to tell us how it's going to put a cap on violence, drug abuse, illness, and all the other things that bring people to our emergency...
But there, I gather, there was some disagreement on the panel on that question. Some thought a more global budget, if I remember your report from Catholic hospitals.
That's correct, Mr. Magaziner.
Yes, and, okay, thank you.
I'll go back. Go ahead.
Secretary Brown?
I'd like to ask the panel, beginning with Dick, what if any role do you see that the Veterans Administration will play in the whole universal healthcare effort, particularly at the local network?
Well, Mr. Secretary, we've had the advantage of a conversation, and we talked through some of this. We feel that when you talk about community-based collaboration, you need to consider how that happens with the governmental sector as well. Does every veteran need to ultimately get their care from a veterans' hospital? And we ultimately share equipment and technology. Can we do that in a collaborative form? We need to look at options on taking care of patients. In some communities, it might be more cost-effective for a veteran to go to their local institution. In other places, it may be more effective to direct patients to the veteran's system. But the point is that the veteran's system ought to be a player in community-based decision-making, and that hasn't been the case historically. Having worked in Maryland a number of years, we tried hard to get the Veterans Administration system to talk through how we could work together as we were considering building a new hospital. There really weren't avenues for that kind of discussion. It seems to me that's got to be essential to our future, that we can't talk about the private sector in isolation. We've got to talk about all existing health delivery systems, whether they're financed by federal governments, state governments, or local governments, and we need to collaborate together. So there certainly can be a role.
I would add to that, Mr. Secretary, that I guess this is Special Interest Day, and maybe this proves that we're all special interests. But over the years, I've often wondered why with so many empty hospital beds around the country, the military, the Veterans Administration, and other programs didn't rent or buy or make some arrangement to use some of those beds instead of building new hospitals all the time. I think that would be one way. And number two, I would hope that on behalf of the veterans, you would look to see if, as a prudent buyer and a prudent purchaser, it made sense for you to buy into these networks, just as I hope the task force is going that route on Medicaid. I think one of the worst mistakes the government has made in every single health program it's undertaken is to buy people services instead of buying them coverage. Instead of buying them individual services, 2,000, 4,000 different items and procedures under Medicare, Medicaid, if it would make financial sense to buy them a private policy just like the rich man has so that there wouldn't be two classes of medicine, and so it wouldn't be a welfare patient walking into a doctor's office, it would be a patient with that same card, that same insurance card that a rich person has, we might find out that we also save a lot of money. And if it were capitated, we'd have an incentive to make sure we didn't do unnecessary services and treatments on that patient just because they were a government patient. So I would hope that the short answer to your question is that the VA would become interested in being a prudent buyer using networks, the same private networks everyone else has as a vehicle, and if it was cost-effective, go that route.
Jerry?
I would reemphasize the necessity for the community planning in that when we're talking about reforming the system, that we don't just break it up into a dozen different parts, that whether it's immediate or longer term, part of the reform plan that you should propose should definitely include how the Veterans Administration, the Indian Health Service, and special need situations are addressed at the community level. The public sector can benefit from what's going on in the private sector and vice versa, and all should be included eventually. And we know that that's a process, but it has to be part of the dialogue.
Sister?
I believe it has to be folded in, too. I might question, Mr. Secretary, whether or not there would be a need for a segregated system for our veterans. Why can't we have healthcare for everyone? And the veteran would be treated like everyone else, have access to the care that he or she needs. And I would hope that when we look at redesigning a delivery system, we won't have in our mind what we're doing right now, but we will change our whole focus. Many of our veterans are long-term care, chronic illness, and there's a way to take care of that in a total network of integrated delivery system, and I believe the VA has a part in that.
Veterans hospitals don't affect children's hospitals directly, but the concept with military hospitals in some communities around the country, there is an overlap. And certainly, I think, again, you look at the needs of that community and integrate those services. So where there is a children's hospital and the military...